Okay, we're going to call the meeting of the Stearns County Board to order. The right that all commissioners are present and we will go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, members. You'll notice we have a couple of things before we get too far, but looking for a motion to approve the agenda unless there are any changes. I know there is one consent item number 13. That's breakfast on the farm, it's being pulled because it is not needed and IT, all of the studies visual went away. But while they're working on that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Awesome.
So moved.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Percy's second. Who made the motion for the record?
Steve.
Steve, okay. Commissioner Notch and Commissioner Persky have made a motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Randy, is Randy on here? By saying, I'm seeing Randy, I'll go ahead and just call the roll, District One, aye, District Two.
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
Aye.
District?
Aye.
District Five?
Aye.
Okay, great, we have Randy with us, so he will be able to do it. The next item on our agenda is the employee service recognition. I don't know, are you all going to be able to show us the video?
Yes.
Okay, great, I think I'm just asking you that because right now, at least on my computer, it's not showing anybody visually.
Oh, well, I'm seeing everybody.
Okay, well then.
The only one I see is Jeff.
Maybe somebody should come in here and look because everybody's gone and I don't have a way to do anything with my camera. So if we can have IT work on that, if we would love to be together to do this in person, but I know we've got a great virtual presentation of our years of service, so how about if we go ahead and start that?
Yeah, I can, I can, Madam Chair, I can introduce it a little bit, we're recognizing.
Thank you.
Forty nine employees with anniversaries. These are from July 2020 to December of 2020. And combined, we have over a thousand years of service with these employees. So this, this is a special time for us, it gives us an opportunity to really celebrate those who have committed their careers actually to serving the people of Stearns County. And as you all know, through the pandemic, we've had a lot of challenges and and I think that that really confirmed really what we all already knew about our employees is that they're they're stellar, they're dedicated, they're hardworking, and they exemplify our values every day, day in and day out, day out. They're really the heart and soul of what we do in Stearns County. So this is our time to take a little time to honor and recognize all of those who have hit those milestones in their careers with us. And as you said, Madam Chair, the presentation looks a little different, but we mean the same things, the accolades are the same. It's really a celebration and so hopefully they can get the PowerPoint going and, and get us started. So go ahead and launch the PowerPoint, please.
It looks like everybody's back up, so that's good while they're getting this going.
So, once again, congratulations to everybody that's hitting those milestones and thank you to all of our employees who really exemplify our mission to provide exceptional public services for a safe, healthy, vibrant county for all. Your hard work and dedication certainly doesn't go unnoticed and on behalf of myself and the county board, we appreciate you. And we understand we wouldn't be successful in serving the residents of Stearns County without you. So thank you very much and congratulations. I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, and just to reinforce one of the things that you said, I mean, our our staff really has had to turn on a dime in this last year and finding new and better ways to be serving people in spite of all these challenges has been really amazing, so thank you to all of our staff. And Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I just also want to recognize your long-term service. When I see these service awards, I'm also just thankful for your service, so thank you for that. Dr. Williams, do we have anybody wishing to speak that's notified you for the public access forum?
We do not.
Okay, I just want to remind the public that anyone who wishes to address the board on issues not found on an agenda can do so during the public access forum. During this peacetime emergency, please just let Dr. Williams know, let Mike know. You've got information, you can see in the packet about how to do that. We can fairly accommodate you virtually as well as taking writing or doing a phone call. And what we do is we, there's an issue that's brought up, we refer it to staff to have somebody address it and report it back to us. So, thank you. Consent agenda, members, with the exception of number 13 that's been pulled, is there anything, any changes? Is there anything you want to discuss? And if not, it would be great to have a motion.
We have.
Commissioner Persky here, I'll move those items, but I'm just telling you that on my computer, I'm seeing myself and just Randy. Randy, you're the only one that's popping up on the screen, otherwise I just got to cut the names of everybody else.
Okay, thank you for saying that. If, I don't know if anybody else is having those challenges. Just like, okay, Joe, they're going to work with you and Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I could see your lips moving, but you are muted. Did you have something you want to say? Did you want a second? You're still mutedly.
If a motion has not been made for the consent agenda, if you need a second, I'm good for a second.
Excellent, and we have a motion, Commissioner Persky, and a second, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. If there's no other discussion, I'll turn it over to you, Randy, for the roll.
Okay, District One.
Aye.
District Two. Lee.
Aye.
Excuse me, District Three.
Aye.
District Four. Lee.
Aye.
District Five.
I was gonna, I'll say aye, but I was gonna ask a question on one of the consent agenda.
So if you want, do, is it going to change your vote or do you want to just ask it and then get done voting?
I just. Okay, I got it figured out. I'm good.
Are you sure? I'm sorry, I was looking, I just missed you there. Okay, then you can, you can go ahead and vote.
I think he already voted aye, so it's a motion.
All right.
Motion passed.
Okay, great. Dr. Williams, I know we have a special visit this morning.
We are right on time to discuss our issues with Congresswoman Fishbuck, but I'm not seeing that they're coming in yet, maybe. The control room is letting them in or they're not here yet, one or the other. I know.
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just, the control room was asking if they might be in a, in a different name, but I, they're, they're she certainly was going to have some staff members with her, so, but I, but I don't know which ones.
Is there something on the shorter end we could jump to while we're waiting? Even for 15 minutes and so probably a little early to take a break.
The one thing that we just, that we, I thought we might discuss is, I had answers from two commissioners about how we wanted to do the report on the Jail Justice Center study. We can do that either next week on Tuesday or the, or during our regular meeting after that. And I did get answer from a couple of commissioners, but not everybody. I'm thinking it's going to take at least an hour and perhaps even more than that. And so I know we don't typically like to do special sessions or however you want to call it workshops, but this was one that I thought might warrant an hour or an hour and a half session.
Commissioner Persky, did you, then you wanted to say?
Yes, I, Dr. Williams, I think that's a good idea. I think the, you know, that that's a major decision we're making and I don't, I would hate to make it in haste and I want some good discussion on that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with, with going forward with that special meeting.
Okay, other members? Ms. Mergens, adding your.
I'm fine with a special meeting.
Okay. Is there Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Notch?
Yep.
Okay.
Make sure you let us know in advance because we have a busy calendar.
Absolutely.
We, I do know that we could do it next Tuesday at 9:00 AM, so I tried to keep it at kind of at a normal time, so.
That would work for me.
Okay, looks like you've got, we've got a workshop and we are joined by our special guest, our Congressman Fishbuck. Can you see us? That's the first question. We've, we've had a little challenges. Yes, we can, we're glad to, glad to see you and that title sounds very good.
Thank you.
To your array of other titles, right?
Yep.
Well, great. Well, we, if, we have got, hopefully you have a copy of our federal priority, priorities. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Williams in a moment. You're going to see an array of things including grant projects and I'll help us go kind of from one, one topic to another. But we really appreciate your working with us and your staff's been great. Dr. Williams, is there anything you want to say to kind of start this off? And you are muted.
Oh. I'm sorry. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome, Congresswoman Fishbuck, we're happy you could join us. And it's nice to see you in, in your new office especially, but we're, we should be joined by several staff members here. Our sheriff and county attorney and human services administrator and, and our highway engineer. If the folks in the control room can let them in, but one thing that I did want to say is that just so you, so you know how we use that first round of CARES funding. Now, we use it, of course, for some of our own costs, but, but most importantly, I think we helped more than 500, like 520 businesses and nonprofits with that, with those dollars, with awards of up to $15,000 each. And we, we got that almost $6 million out into the community through that program. And we, we actually partnered with 11 of our area cities and leveraged some of, some of their dollars. So the county had, you know, 4.6 million in, I think, and then, and the cities had more than $1.3 million in. So I think we had a really successful program. We used those cities because not only to leverage the dollars, but they could more closely connect with their businesses that, and nonprofits that needed help. We also provided some assistance to our schools and our hospital and a couple of other entities. So I just wanted you to know that I think we, I think we met the legislative intent of those CARES Act dollars and wanted to make sure that you heard that from us. And if you want any more information on that, I'm happy to, to provide it. But we did send you and your staff this Stearns County federal priorities list. And so what, what we wanted to do, unless you want to do something introductory, Congresswoman, we just kind of wanted to run through those so you can hear from us what our priorities are over in your domain for the coming year. And so that's why we have some, some of our other staff members here that, that know these, know these issues a little better than, than I do. So if that's okay, we'll run through those, Madam Chair and Congresswoman.
And, and I will just say, thank you very much for putting the meeting together. I won't give introductory remarks because I think you guys know who I am, so I won't, I won't bore you with that. But I will tell you, I'm, I've got the, the federal priorities up on another computer right next to me. So if I'm looking away, I'm still paying attention, I'm just reading my other computer. I'm far too fancy here with all these computers, so I just wanted to tell you that I'm reading it while we're, I've looked through it, but wanted to have it up for reference. So you guys go ahead and happy, like I said, happy that you were able to put the meeting together.
Wonderful. Well, then we're going to go ahead and start with a couple of grant areas. And both our sheriff, Steve Saika, and our county attorney, Janelle Kendall, have the titles in there. And then Attorney Kendall also has one other item, so she's going to do a couple kind of back to back. So Sheriff, are you on here? I think I see you. At least I see the word Steve.
I am on here, can you hear me?
All right, great.
Coming to you live from my squad car, so I want to make sure the technology's working, but, and I'm not driving, I'm pulled over, so.
That's great. Well, you might need to turn up your sound just a touch, something we don't normally say in these meetings.
All right, can you hear me now?
Well, listen intently, go ahead.
Okay, well, I appreciate you taking the time to meet this morning and I will keep mine pretty short if you have it in front of you. Just from the sheriff's office standpoint, we applied for a high intensity drug trafficking area, otherwise known as HEITA grant. Specifically to do some, this grant is for extra enforcement of controlled substance laws, education, prevention. You know, if we get the grant, we'll sit down with probably a working group to determine, you know, what we're all going to do with it. We did apply, Stearns County is the fiscal agent for the Central Minnesota Violent Offender Task Force. And that is pretty much a fancy name for our drug task force, which is made up of Stearns, Sherburne, Benton, Morrison and Todd Counties. And then we have City of St. Cloud Investigators, couple other local agencies on that task force. So we, we're the fiscal agent for it, so we decided we'd apply for the grant. I'm happy to say it got through its local selection and moved on to the regional, got through the regional. It should be out in Washington DC as we speak for a review. Sounds like that does not happen though until at least May or June, and we would not hear anything until August or September. So obviously controlled substance doesn't have any borders. In fact, we just had an overdose last week of a young gentleman with heroin and fentanyl out in the county, kind of south end of our county down by Eden Valley. Turned out the drug dealer through our investigation lives in the Annandale area, so we worked with the Wright County Sheriff's Office and Drug Task Force, you know, to try and get a criminal charge on that person for selling the drugs. But I don't think I have to talk too much about that, I think we all know that and certainly appreciate any support that you can render for maybe moving that forward so we can get some extra funding to do some, some more enforcement, prevention and education in the world of controlled substances.
Well, if there is, if there is something that our office can do, you know, please let us know if there's, if there's any kind of support we can give it or whatever it may take, we can, we can make sure we do that.
Sure, absolutely. I can, you know, and I can at least figure out which committee it goes to. I don't know who actually reviews it out in Washington, I just know that it's on its way there if it's not already there. And it doesn't get looked at till like May or June, but at least if you know a committee, you might be able to address, if there's somebody out there to just put in the good word for us.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Great, great, thank you, Sheriff. So we have our county attorney, Janelle Kendall, who you also know well. She's got two different things she is going to talk to you today about and we'll start off with the Domestic Violence Partnership, the Supervised Visitation Grant.
Senator Fishbuck, thank you for being here. As you may know, we have had a felony level domestic violence court in Stearns County since 2009. We were actually the first one in the state to try this model and we've worked with intentionally the more serious offenders. These are not the people who are coming through the system the first time, but people who are charged with felonies now and have been charged with felonies in the past. We do have a pending federal grant for a supervised visitation center. Because of the remodeling of the county's buildings, we ended up having space actually right across the hall from the new felony courtroom, CARES Act funded, thank you, to put a place where these serious offenders, when they're doing drop offs with kids, when they, a place where they can have a safe exchange. It's been one of the gaps that we've had in the Domestic Violence Partnership for about 10 years here, but no one had the space literally to do it. So now that the county has opened up the space, we do have a pending 650,000. it. So now that the county has opened up the space, we do have a pending $650,000 grant. It's an Office of Violence Against Women Fiscal 2021. We would be happy to reach out to your office. And if a letter of support could arrive at OBW, that would be very helpful. We do have a strong relationship with that agency. They have been part of the funding of the Domestic Violence Court since 2009, but we haven't applied for a grant in a couple of years. And this again is supervised visitation. Then separately, we have a Human Trafficking Task Force that started in 2018 as a result of just having our eyes become open to what actually goes on in this community with human trafficking. We're specifically working sex trafficking right now, although we are aware of labor trafficking cases that could occur. We have this before the Minnesota Legislature. You know what this looks like. I'll be in front of the Senate Judiciary Committee at 1 o'clock on Wednesday on some tweaks in the trafficking laws. Right now, we are not seeking additional funding. We are grant funded. And we're in a group of people that has been at this for a while. So they literally come to us when they want to know what can we do to help? And that has been going very well statewide in terms of money flowing from the federal government and into the Minnesota Legislature. So we are actively working on those statutory tweaks in the Minnesota Legislature. It's already through the House. We go to the Senate on Wednesday, but happy to keep you apprised of that. As time goes on, we may seek additional funding. But candidly, I just thank you and other members of the federal delegation for the help that we received on this so far.
Wonderful. Thank you. And please do keep in touch with the office. If you know, if you mentioned the letter of support, we can get that. So and I don't know, Chair Clark, if who you were working with to set up the meeting, but but certainly you can start with start with them. I don't know who it was, maybe Ben or Nick, I can't remember. But make sure that you, you know, touch base with them on these issues, too. Oh, Nick is on the call, I guess. Oh, no, Ben is Ben. Now that I'm looking, Ben Anderson, a district director. I don't see his pretty picture. I just so so Ben is Ben, I'm sure is there he is. So Ben, I'm sure you're you're making notes so that we can follow up on and make sure we get that stuff done. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, and Nick is on the phone. Nick is Nick is the Legislative Director in DC is on here, too. I guess I wasn't looking at everybody's name. So.
Well, and it's great to see their faces, too. We also appreciate the work you do. And we'll make sure that staff is connecting up with you, too, about both of these.
Yeah.
They're they're very important, as you all know. So appreciate your support. And we are now going to turn it over transportation, just a few things, you know, some things you probably heard about before. Turn it over to our County Engineer, Jody Teck.
Good morning, Congresswoman. It's nice to see you again. So I'll try to go through this quickly. I know you have a copy of it in front of you. But I just want to start off by saying in Minnesota, 32% of the road mileage and over 40% of bridges are on the county system. That trend does follow through on the national level where counties own 46% of all public roads and 38% of the bridge inventory. So please remember local agencies when you're working on highway funding reauthorization. Obviously, we're a vital part of the whole network and oftentimes the start of those farm to market trips, etc. So programs like Infra and Build, they provide a lot of funding for vital projects across the country. But just as a reminder, programs like Infra don't always work well for smaller local agencies who can't they don't necessarily have the resources to complete all of the environmental studies and the engineering without knowing that that project does have some future funding. And a lot of these projects without that influx of outside funding just can't be done. Now, we mentioned in our priorities, a couple of projects that we thought would have competed well for the build program. I understand now they're reviewing that criteria and that notice of funding opportunity will be coming out. And I know I've talked with individuals at the US DOT and their best recommendation is just to wait and see what those criteria are. There is some concern that again, some of those smaller, more rural projects may not compete depending what those criteria are focused on, whether that be resiliency, etc. Oftentimes, it's very difficult in rural Minnesota to do projects that will minimize vehicle miles traveled or try to reduce that. And on those farm to market trips, again, that's just going to be really difficult, which is why we are so happy to see a return of earmarks or rather community project funding. Many projects throughout Stearns County, all across Stearns County, would not have been done without past earmarks. And all of those projects were very worthy. There were no bridges to nowhere. There were no controversial projects. These were much needed projects. So we will likely be reaching out to you in the very near future with projects in the western portion of the county that we would like you to consider giving us your support for. I know the projects listed in our priorities are a couple of examples, more in the St. Cloud area and Congressman Emmer's area. But we have many projects throughout the county that would qualify for these this new generation, I guess, of earmarks. And very quickly, I'll just go through the other items. You know, you're very familiar with our desire to continue expansion of Interstate 94 and complete improvements on Trunk Highway 23 from border to border. Most of the projects in Stearns County have been done or will be done within the next few years. But we certainly support all of those border to border safety improvements because those same drivers outside of the county may be from Stearns County or headed to Stearns County. So we support all of those safety improvements. And of course, Interstate 94 will have that four lane gap in between six lane sections between Monticello and Albertville after all of the construction is done on there right now. We make a brief mention of North Star Community Rail in here as well. So if you have any questions, certainly, I'm happy to talk about them. But otherwise, I look forward to reaching out to your office for support of an earmark project.
Important community, right?
Yes.
Do you have any questions, Congresswoman?
You know, I was just glancing through and no, I don't think I do.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Very much appreciate it. Going to go back to Dr. Williams on the next one on broadband. I think you know a bit about this as well. It's really critically important in your district and something we're working on. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there's a huge part of Stearns County that is all unserved and underserved by state standards. And I know you know that. And the bulk of almost all of that is in the western part of the county. And you know, and there are federal funds, of course, there's ARDOF funds, and there's border to border funds. But but we still see there's gaps that providers can't can't make 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 ends meet when they're trying to provide service. And I put an example in the in the document there when I was working with ARVIC. And they had an area in the Elros area where they wanted to serve over 400 homes, about almost 450 premises. And even with ARDOF funds, their gap was going to be over $9,000 per premise. So they were looking for a lot more help. And that was with the money they were putting in, too. So they were looking for a lot more help than we could than we could muster up even. And there was problems hooking up with border to border, too. Now, we do know that the new funds coming are can be used on broadband. So we'll see how that that can come into play. And hopefully, we'll make some of that work in that western part of the county, too. But so we'll see and we'll keep in touch on how we're doing with those new dollars, too.
Yeah, yeah. And do please keep in touch on that because what we're trying to do and is really look at, you know, where those gaps are and where we can fill in because, you know, we've been putting a lot of money into it. But if we but we need to find out how to use that money better and where it really needs to go. And so please keep in touch on that because that is a huge, huge concern in the air in my whole district. You know, there are there are areas like that in the whole district. And so I've really been really been taking a look at that and seeing if we can do something to close those gaps and make sure that people get that that internet.
That's great. That's great. Commissioner Clark and I actually testified on a couple of bills in the state legislature. They were talking about should we do something different with some of these really hard to hard to serve areas, you know, you know, change the criteria so that we can meet those areas. And it might be even one like I'm talking about here as the example. So I think there might need to be some tweaks to the programs to reach some of those areas. And a lot. And if you think about it, you know, a lot of these programs, they've hit the areas that we could I wouldn't say that providers are cherry picking, but they're reaching those that they can reach with the available funds, which is making it even harder to reach those hard to reach areas. So we're kind of creating our own problem a little bit.
Well, part of it, I think, is fair. I'm getting to serve our National Association has broadband task force. And I'm getting I'm serving on that. And as we've really been looking at the digital divide, you know, let's face it, some of our challenges are these outmoded outdated terms in statute. And that's something you have more than a little experience with. So we can certainly help you with that, you know, in some ways, some goals around the unserved pop areas and then the underserved. And I, you know, we certainly were seeing across your district, it's certainly in Western Stearns, challenges, kids sitting outside libraries or schools just to do our work COVID hit. And now between telehealth and mental health reports and everything else, the world has obviously changed. And in working with some of the educator, you know, they're really finding the what we had was adequate bandwidth. It's just not adequate for for what our kids are needing. So your help with making sure that this actually works, we're happy to be with you, but glad you're willing to kind of help us unbundle, no pun intended, you know, some of the the challenges that make this harder.
Absolutely. We there are challenges and we need to figure out, you know, where, like I said, where we use that money best. And I'll tell you, I am the ranking member on a on on the Commodities Exchange Credit and Subcommittee of the Agriculture Committee, and it actually has broadband under its under its purview. And so I was talking to the Chair of that Subcommittee the other day, and we are one the first the first hearing we are going to have is on broadband and how we can help in those countries. So we are going to start looking at it and see what we can go with it.
That's great. Let's say so. It's no longer a luxury. It's such a hard thing when we started off that way. So thank you on that. And Dr. Williams, I don't know if you have anything else on that. I know you've got the Airport Authority one.
In the airport, Congresswoman, I really don't think we there's much to do right now. But I just want to put a bug in your ear that we're in that process of going through the FAA approval for creating that air that Regional Airport Authority. And all three counties in the city adopted the resolution and created that Regional Airport Authority. And we've seated the new the new commissioners or that what will become the new board. But we're working through that. It's an arduous process with the FAA to to get the, you know, basically a transfer of ownership. And there's a funny word they use for it that I can't remember. But anyway, I just wanted we just wanted to let you know that we're going through that process. And if we do need a little help, you know that we're where we are on it. And we will keep in touch on that if we need if we need some assistance.
And then I believe our last one, and not to say that we couldn't talk about a slew of other issues, but our last one on here, I'll turn it over to Melissa Huberty, our Human Services Administrator, as it relates to mental health and substance use issues.
Morning. Good morning, Congresswoman Fishbuck. It's nice to see you again. I think I might have been in a different county when we last worked together on some issues. But Stearns County is the best county. So as you know, we continue to need a lot of support for mental health and substance use disorders across the continuum of care. And I'd like to just at a high level highlight two issues. One is the reimbursement rates for Medicaid medical assistance in our state. They're so low that we can't pay professionals to actually do the work. And that's true across the board with all of the mental health services that are billed the medical assistance. Most providers cannot meet their costs at a time when they're the most needed. So if the rates don't increase, eventually this will become like the dentist where if you're on medical assistance, you really can't find dentists to serve you because they can't meet their costs. And then, of course, what happens is people don't take care of their health. Early on, we spend a lot more dollars trying to fix the deep end problems that happen and also seriously impact individuals and families. And it's a lot more expensive to the taxpayer at that point. So that's one big issue. And the second issue is the waivers. We need to keep the waivers in place. Telemedicine and telepresence have really streamlined our work and have allowed us to provide more services to people in a way that they want to receive them even. What we still do want to see people in person, of course, but there's a lot of things we're seeing in video that we wouldn't be able to see. Actually, if we drag people into the office. And one issue in there that I'd like to highlight particularly is is with WIC services is a really good example of there's no purpose to requiring moms to come straight from the delivery room to our office buildings to pick up formula for the infant. That's ridiculous. And so there's some of these processes that are just a lot of nonsense that with the waivers, we can cut through. And I'm sure you've been hearing a lot about this. And of course, there we've been doing business in a in a lot of innovative and new ways. And so it's not like we don't want to not see people in person, but we want to be able to have a hybrid model going forward.
Okay. Well, and I have heard about, you know, keeping those waivers in place from others. So we will, as things move on, we will make we will see what we can do on it.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Dr. Williams, do you have anything else? Otherwise, I don't know, Congresswoman, if you've got.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Those are the issues that we really want to break away. And we're keeping you right on time, too. But those are the issues we wanted to make you aware of. We're certainly willing to have more of a conversation on anything that you want in your time remaining. But that's that's what we wanted to do.
Well, I was just going to, you know, and I didn't realize I didn't see them earlier. But you know, I mentioned Nick and Ben, and Nick is in DC and Ben is in the district. And I just wanted to check with them to see if they had any questions, anything that they had questions about. But otherwise, I think I answered the questions that I had in the broadband. And we will continue to work. And I will just say, please keep in touch. That's the important part is making sure that, you know, we know what your concerns are. And let us know if there's something we can help with. I know that there's a couple of things we want to follow up on and support letters. But, you know, really, just make sure that we are we are in contact and we know what you need to for help. You guys, I don't know if you have anything.
Joe Persky here. Good to see you. Say just thing I will mention to you, Highway 23 Coalition had met with Ben and Nick, and we talked about the importance. Obviously, you know, the bypass around Painesville and the improvements coming on the other ends of that as well. So we're continuing to work on that whole stretch. And that's going to take some work also with Congressman Emmer and Staber as far as getting it all the way up to 35W. And we've got some projects in place along that way that we're looking for some funding. So just thought I'd mention it.
Well, and Highway 23 is always a concern, right? So it's always so I should have asked about it, but I just kind of figured it was still there.
You could almost consider that to be our silent priority. That's a silent priority. Well, great. Ben and Nick, we appreciate, again, your work. If you are seeing things that we can get for you. As you know, we've got incredible staff and the board and our other elected officers, officials are always willing to be helpful. So when you can finally get back out and about, too, field trips are always good. There's there's good things that we can be helping you see firsthand.
That'd be wonderful. And
We are thankful for this. We might not have gotten to come to Washington to see you. But this this is you get actually to hear from more people this way.
Yeah, well, and soon enough. Hopefully, things will open up and we can we can you can come out again. And that'd be great to see you. So I'm looking forward to those days when we can see each other in person.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you. I think Dr. With us. Thank you so much. And Ben and Nick, thank you as well.
Thank you all.
Guys, have a good day.
Bye. Great. Wonderful. Thank you. So we're we're actually, we are right on time. This next part, we are continuing the public hearing, which we really didn't get started last time. So continuing is kind of a, you know, it's the technical term. We're going to start really our our public hearing about considering enacting modifications to ordinance number 618. We have several items on this. And because of the length we're likely to go, we will take a break in between. So if somebody is wanting to do that sooner than I say something, please let me know. And we can we can do that. Otherwise, right now, we'll go ahead and turn this over to Shelley Benson and Angie Berg.
Madam Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. We will be starting on packet page 93 with public hearing and Angie Berg is available. So Angie, I will let you go ahead with that.
Thank you, Shelley. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Angie Berg with
Thank you, Shelley. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Angie Berg with Environmental Services. As you indicated, Madam Chair, this item was continued from March 2, although we didn't have hearing at that time. So where we are going to start today, or I'm proposing to start today, would be with our manufactured home provisions, moving on to solar farms, A-employee housing, and then I'll say the rest. And the reason for the order is due to callers that we have today. So we can we can take our testifiers and then move on to other topics where we haven't had a lot of interest. So again, moving on to the manufactured home section, and Shelley can jump on in here too. She's Shelley's been working on the manufactured home park ordinance for a while. That has not taken on any movement in the last couple of years. And so we are proposing as part of the zoning ordinance change to basically reiterate what state law already requires fires in these manufactured home parks or manufactured homes located in the A area. So it would apply to any and all manufactured homes in Sterns County, except for manufactured homes in incorporated areas. Everything that we're talking about today only applies in township areas. We don't have zoning jurisdiction in municipalities. So that was a bit of confusion. So I just wanted to straighten that out. So with that, Madam Chair, I know we do have callers on today. I believe we have, if we could take them a little bit out of order, I believe Phil Johnson with PLJ Realty has a conflict so earlier. So let's let's save him till last. And Shannon Smith, my understanding, is not joining us. So Madam Chair, I would recommend that we start with Mark Bruner, and then on deck would be Kevin Shekel.
Okay, great. I'm gonna open this public hearing. Not sure if technically I needed to do that since we continued it, but just to have all bases covered. Okay, so you said Shannon, is that is that the one, is that the person you just said? Okay, Shannon, Ms. Smith, thank you. Welcome. Welcome to our meeting.
Madam Chair, it's possible that Shannon is not on the call. It's hard for me to manage who's all on the call and look at the screen. So I might need help from the control room.
So I see Mr. Bruner is is with us. And if you are ready, you can go ahead and speak now. Oh, and yes, why don't we go ahead and have you speak? Staff is telling us that right now it does not appear that Shannon is on the on the call. Mr. Bruner, welcome.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Mark Bruner. I'm with the Manufactured Modular Home Association of Minnesota, where the statewide trade association that represents builders of modular homes, manufactured homes, as well as manufactured home community owners in the state. And we do have members in Sterns County who are impacted by the ordinance. And we appreciate the the county reaching out to our members as well as the association for feedback and trying to put together an ordinance that's that's workable and perhaps in line with what we see in other counties and how things are administered by the Department of Health. I'd just like to start with a few points or questions and suggestions under the 7.23.2. We think it would be helpful if there were some clarification in that verbiage about locating, relocating, and moving a home into the county so that perhaps if it were to read locating, relocating, and moving before any manufactured home can be moved into or within the county for residential occupancy in an unincorporated area, the following items might must be met. It's not clear that, you know, as it's written right now, that perhaps somebody moving a home through the county to another location might have to, you know, that could be interpreted that, well, you've got to have all these forms and things because you're you're moving your home through the county, which I, you know, isn't anyone's, I'm sure, intent here. But that would help clarify that you're really dealing with homes that are going to be located for occupancy. And that that would also help with another sort of suggestion I'll have relative to homes that might come in that are going to a licensed sales center in Sterns County that aren't going to be occupied, that are going to be, that are going to be sold at the sales centers. So they may be sold at the sales center and located within Sterns County or not. But in either case, under the Minnesota State Building Code, no used manufactured home can be sold unless it meets the notice of compliance requirement at that sales center, which you're already requiring. So it would just be a matter of, okay, the home is coming in to a sales center, or it may be coming in, let's say, to the manufactured home community where the the community or park owner owns the home, and they will be making the, how do I want to say this? You know, updates, corrections at that at that time, once it's there, in which case then the county would be able to issue a certificate of occupancy. Or again, if if they're a licensed sales center and they're selling that home, before they can sell it, it would have to meet the notice of of compliance standard as well as a part of them having a sales license, whether it's a standalone sales center or a sales center within a within a manufactured home community. So we think that would be helpful. And then I'll make another point in that regard in in another section. The jumping to 7.23.2.4, the requirement requiring that the title be registered to the current manufactured homeowner will be problematic when, for example, it's a new home that's coming into the maybe coming into the county for residential occupancy, whether on private property or in in a manufactured home community, because that will not have been processed yet. And, you know, similarly, in the case of a used home where there's been a sale involved and the title is being transferred, you know, that those transfers at Department of Public Safety, you know, can, you know, take weeks, if not a couple of months to happen. So it might be useful there if you were to require that they show proof of submission, that the title that they've, you know, made application or for transfer as as a way to, you know, create some leeways so that they could actually, you know, continue with the process of the sale and locating the home, yet proof that they've actually made application. We think that that would that would be helpful. The, you know, and in requiring the the purchase agreement in this relative to sort of comparing it to the title, you know, that that would be a problem as well. So if you take, you know, if you have the purchase agreement, which you're requiring to see, and then you could compare that to either the the title or the application that that's being made for title, that that would help sort of tie those two together as well without having to have fully completed the the process. Also, a part of that section requiring to show proof that the property taxes have been paid while on an existing home being moved in from another county or even within the county, that's feasible. But similarly, with a new home, manufactured home, that won't be available simply because it'll be the first time it's being located on on property. And there wouldn't be a way for someone to secure that proof as as one of the requirements. So maybe some differentiation between, you know, existing or used home and a new home that that wouldn't have that available. The another point or question is the requirement that the owner of the manufactured home park be in possession of the the title. Have a copy of the title of the of the home. You know, that raises questions on our part is, you know, as the owner, you know, where where do they get the authority to require that? For example, you know, we we're limited in what we can require of of a homeowner or a resident under Minnesota Statute 327C, sort of, you know, the landlord tenant law. And so for us to require that could be problematic. And at the same time, you know, what would we do with it or why do we want it? You know, I think that, you know, perhaps that's something better handled if if the county wants that information at the time that that they're being moved, that the home is being moved in, and then the follow up from the, okay, we've got the title as they're moving the home or relocating the home into the county or within the county or as the follow up to that application that's being made as far as who who owns the home. So we're not real comfortable with requiring that the community owner have to have a copy of that. And, you know, if their homeowner won't provide it, well, then what do you do? We don't necessarily have the authority to take any action under 327C to force them or to a victim. And just it sets up sort of a contentious situation. The other sort of, or the final point or question just relates to the being in compliance with the notice of compliance. And I mentioned this earlier, but just as a follow up, so that if a home is coming into the county that's been purchased so by the community owner or the or a sales center, you know, some assurance that they can have that work done once the home is located or relocated on on their property, whether it's the the community or the sales center. You know, sometimes the the work that needs to be done, you don't send somebody from the your location in, you know, Painesville, St. Cloud, wherever that might be, if you're purchasing the home in Duluth to make some repairs and then have to have a building official at that time in Duluth come and do the inspection. It's logistically not good and just, you know, the the cost of doing that. Well, we would still get the same outcome. In other words, nobody's going to sell that home. Nobody's going to live in that home. But we can get the work done, bring it into compliance, once it is in Sterns County. And aside from, you know, having a local or a licensed building official do it in some parts of the state, and perhaps, you know, in Sterns County, you know, they they don't exist. But the code does allow for a third party and approved by labor and industry inspector to actually do that compliance work and evaluation. For example, any manufactured home that's moved into Sterns County on on private property or in a manufactured home community, when it's installed, it has to meet certain requirements. And that inspection has to be inspected, e by a local building official or an approved third party inspector, or the Department of Labor and Industry will actually travel out and do that inspection. So, you know, some of that is happening right now, and that that applies anywhere in the state of Minnesota, code or non-code areas. So just sort of those options of having the inspection done would be helpful if that were, you know, described in the in the ordinance, because all three are currently permissible right now under the building code. And, you know, Madam Chair, right now, that's, you know, that's all I have. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, members. Do you have any questions at this time, Mr. Bruner? Okay, feel feel free to stay on with us. We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at that, it's it's really very helpful.
Thanks.
Thank you. Angie, I looks like Mr. Shekel may be with us.
Yes, Madam Chair, we can we can take Kevin, and then after that, we can see if Phil Johnson's on the line.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Shekel.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to be pretty brief today as I as I think Mark did a great job covering covering specifics. We echo all of his all of his comments. Generally speaking.
And Mr. Shekel, just real quick for the record, can you just say who you're representing? That would be helpful.
Yes, I'm representing two mobile home park communities in Sterns County, the St. Joe Community and Riverview Park in St. Cloud.
Thank you.
And I'm the in-house attorney for for the organization that owns those, Summit Management. Thank you. So I guess my comments are just more general at this point. You know, the specifics that Mark mentioned are crucial. But I, we believe a careful look at the other, the other existing requirements that are out there in terms of statutory requirements, code requirements, what the state agencies require will help inform inform a clear drafting of this ordinance. And we would also suggest, you know, I want to say thanks to Angie for clarifying the applicability. She sent me an email yesterday. That was helpful. But but the applicability that Mark mentioned in terms of when when there's a home just passing through the the unincorporated portions of the county, how do we deal with that? I mean, so thinking about applicability and timing and movement of these of these manufactured homes as we draft, those are my general comments. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Shekel. Members, any questions for for him? I'm looking, not seeing anybody raising a hand. Okay. Do we have either the other two people on the line with us right now?
Madam Chair, my understanding from the control room is that Phil Johnson is not on. And I and Shannon Smith from Impact Communities was representing Star Town Mobile Home Park, and I communicated her with her again this morning, and she indicated she's not presenting. So if Phil is not on, then we would have nobody else to present on this item.
Members, do you, Shelley, I think I'm seeing you talking. I don't know if either of you have any ideas or suggestions based on what we've heard so far.
Madam Chair, yes. So in response to the testimony provided by Mr. Bruner, which we greatly appreciate, and Mr. Shekel, that they have taken the time to look at it, and and we did as well. We understand the concern they have related to the manufactured homes that would not be residing, so to speak, in the county. But that was one of the issues that since we don't have building code, we don't issue certificates of occupancy. So we know that those manufactured homes, regardless of where they're being placed in the county, need to make sure they meet the notice of compliance. And that's that's the critical piece for us. So we certainly would like to allow for people to move manufactured homes through the county and and address language for that purpose, as well as those parties wanting to sell manufactured homes. We'd also want them to be able to do that as long as it's not for occupancy. And I think we can we can address that language. So what we could do on this portion, if you'd like, is we can continue that to get that language worked out and bring that language back to you. Or we can try to go forward. I think continuing it, that way we have time for the conversation, and we can make sure it's worked out, and then we can bring it back to you as specific language that that would address all of those concerns. I think most of those are things that we understand, and we just want to get the specifics of the language corrected.
And that would include the the kind of the unintended consequence of the language that relates to proof versus perhaps submission? I mean, it sounds like there's a language that could help clarify what we were attempting to do here. Is that sorry, is is that what you're also suggesting is working on that language?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's that's correct. What we do want, though, is it's fact that someone has provided the the submission or application. We do understand that processing of documents is not something that is happening quickly at the state level. So we would want to allow for that application process. So I think we can put that and write that in the language. So if you want, we can continue this portion of it for specific language.
Members, are you okay with that? Continuing this portion, I'm seeing some head nodding. I don't know if anybody's got any clarifying questions that you want to address to staff or to people who just presented? Okay, I'm not I'm not seeing anything right now. So I think we would continue this part. Do we need to actually vote on that? Or can we just continue this this portion of the public hearing? Randy, I'm looking to you for some guidance on that.
Yeah, I think if there's a portion of it you want to continue, you certainly can. Just just on the manufactured home part, that part of the taxation and ownership, there was a group of county people from, you know, the Assessor's Office and Auditor Treasurer, along with Environmental Services, that looked at that area. We certainly can take those comments and relook at this area, and I think that would be wise.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Brunner, to Shekel, thank you for participating. I'm getting have some further conversations with our staff and members. We will continue this this portion so that we can get some language worked on and come back to us.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I got a question for Shelley.
Mr. Joe, go ahead.
Shelley, you know, at the beginning, we mentioned that this is pertains to mobile home parks that are outside the municipalities. Does that mean we have we have the sole control then of monitoring what's going on in those?
We, Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, yeah, we do have control over those that are outside of the municipalities. So we would be responsible then to the level that we are being for compliance with the with the standards that we want in place. So that would include anchoring and making sure these things are all properly in compliance for occupation, that someone can can actually occupy them.
And then as far as the ones that are in municipalities, the specific municipality, are they supposed to have the standards by which, you know, these mobile home parks must operate under? Where I'm going with this is it seems that there's sometimes confusion between what the state should be doing and what the city should be doing to keep things up to standard.
Ms. Benson, recognizing we don't have any control over what this would do. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, I think that is part of the question and the concern that has been raised over time is sometimes we license things and yet we're in a city. So the licensing would be similar to what the state does because we're delegated. So we have a license for that manufactured home park. But those cities will have the building code and they can administer the building code. They any manufactured home that's bought and sold within the within the state is supposed to have that notice of compliance completed. So it might be more of a educational opportunity for us to have that conversation with some of the municipalities, so they know the tools that exist on those existing manufactured homes.
Okay, it just seems to be in my experience. Yep.
I'm just trying to recognize you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Persky.
Okay. It's it's been my experience that it it seems that oftentimes things go unresolved within some of these mobile home parks where we were playing one entity against the other or the or the municipality does not take their responsibility and and sends it off over to the county. And, you know, things did not have actually change in a timely manner. I just want to make sure that, you know, you know, these mobile home parks are safe and, you know, a nice place to at least, you know, have a home. And oftentimes, these ordinances aren't confused between the state, the the county and the city as far as who's supposed to be implementing them.
Ms. Benson.
I just think we need clarification with the municipalities on that.
To Commissioner Persky's point, what kind of information sharing, coordination, cooperation, gap, gap kind of things is done at this point? Is there something that might be missed that we have an opportunity to, at least with education?
Madam Chair, I think that is exactly one of the points that we've been working on. I will use the Star Town Manufacturing Park as an example. We are working with the city, with our attorney's office, with their offices and through our licensing and then through their code enforcement to make sure all of these things work a little bit better. So it's it's taken time and there's been turnover and there's been change. But I think we're in a better place. And what we want to do is also with other cities to that end as well. So I think we are working in a better direction than we have. And we hope that this will help move all of that forward.
Great. And I think participation from the people who came 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 and talked with us today is a helpful as well. Okay, members, Commissioner Persky, are you good right now? This, okay, all right, great. See no other questions, we can move. We thank you. Thank you both for testifying and for continuing to work with staff on this. Appreciate it. And we will look forward to this coming back ready. Okay, next up, I'm not sure if we're going next to solar because of testifiers or if we've got, all right, Angie, Ms. Bergs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to solar farms, I do have some testifiers. I know we reviewed this with the Ordinance Review Committee and the which includes the County Board and the Planning Commission a few months back. But I would just like to highlight the the potential changes to be discussed today would basically be changing to allow solar farms that are greater than three megawatts would be interim and anything less than three would be permitted. Currently, solar farms are prohibited in the Transitional Residential Twenty and Residential Ten zoning district. This proposal would allow them in those districts as well. Along with that, some of these changes include a change to screening. This change really has nothing to do with where solar farms are permitted. Our recommendation is that the board would look at firing a setback of 20 feet from the solar, from the screening to the property line. What we're finding is that the screening is built right on the property line. And then they are having a hard time maintaining that screening without impacting adjacent properties. The next change here basically would be only if the board would allow these as permitted uses, then all of this language in purple would need to be added. Those are typically the the conditions placed by the board when additional use permits are granted. The rest are are basically just things that we've been communicating in all of the emails that I send you all related to to solar. We've made some changes to our internal process related to wetland review. We do send every solar farm to the DNR and have a review of the natural heritage site. Decommissioning, again, this is based on a standard condition that we would need to have in the ordinance if the solar farms went as permitted. So with that, Madam Chair, my understanding is we have three speakers, Michelle Sims, David Watts, and Paula Fitzgerald. So if they're all on the line, we can go in order and we'll take Michelle first.
That sounds good. Ms. Sims, are you with us?
I am, yes, Madam Chair and Commissioner. Welcome. Thank you so much for your time today. As mentioned, I'm Michelle Sims with US Solar. So prior to today's public hearing, we prepared a comprehensive packet and also sent over an email regarding the current decommissioning surety requirements held in Stearns County. So I would just ask you to review those for some additional information to consider in this discussion. And lastly, I'll just share that throughout our time, we've worked with many landowners who find immense agricultural and financial value through taking part in this program and added support for them to continue doing what they love, give back to their family and community. And this program also offers taxpayers in Stearns County to explore land use. That offers them many benefits and it's also a great business development opportunity for the county. So, thank you.
Ms. Sims, is there anything that you want to make sure to highlight from your written comments? I know that members may have looked at it previously. They may be reading it right now, but is there anything you want to make sure that we are we're hearing from you on those items?
Yeah, I think I'd really just add, Madam Chair and Commissioners, the benefits that it brings, not only to the landowners here in the county, but also the environmental benefits that come along with the solar design and and practices. And just that this is a great opportunity for Stearns County residents to take part in.
Okay, and and thank you. If you'd be willing to stay on, members may have they have questions for you, which I'm sure will not surprise you if they do or if we do. Okay, thank you. Mr. Watts?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, yeah, thanks for having me on. I actually don't have any prepared remarks, but just to respond to your question, Madam Chair, I think one other.
I'm sorry, Mr. Watts, can you just say for the record either where you live or if you're representing a group, who you're representing, just so we have that?
Sure, yeah. So I'm David Watts. I work for US Solar. Our business address is 100 North Sixth Street in Minneapolis, Minnesota. The only thing from the email correspondence that I would like to quickly highlight, in addition to obviously the benefits that we can go into if you'd like, is the decommissioning surety requirement. Currently, as it's written, there's no specific minimum requirement. So this is something that's within staff's control to set for each project. But historically speaking, Stearns County has recent, somewhat recently, required about $185,000 for a one megawatt project. I just want to call to your attention that for smaller local businesses such as US Solar, that's a very difficult upfront cost to stomach for a project of this size. And also, we feel that it's not necessary for the protection of the county or its taxpayers. So we'd be happy to go into that if you'd like. We would hope that, you know, it doesn't require a change to the ordinance as written, but it's just something that we want to flag for the county to be aware of. And our request is simply to consider alternative decommissioning surety solutions, whether that's something that's funded over time or decreasing the total surety amount or some combination of the two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Ms. Fitzgerald, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Paula Fitzgerald, Novel Energy Solutions. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak this morning. I just wanted to start out by saying I I really think that you guys have put a lot of work into this ordinance, a lot of thought into it. Stearns County has always had a very solid ordinance and conditions when it comes to community solar gardens. I believe that the ordinance that you've got in front of you definitely protects landowners, the environment, and promotes promotes renewable energy. So I think very good job on on the ordinance and putting it together and and being proactive. I agree that this is going to be a a huge benefit to Stearns County and your residents. I also would like to kind of echo what David brought up about the decommissioning cash escrow. You know, obviously, you know, Novel is a Minnesota-based company, always been here, always will be. And, you know, that kind of a dollar amount to tie up for 25 years is extremely, you know, difficult and and really hurts from a business planning perspective. So I I would agree if there'd be a way to kind of evaluate that a little bit differently or, you know, allow like a performance bond as an option or something, that would be greatly appreciated. But but again, I I think that the ordinance amendments that you're looking at are very proactive and and I want to thank you guys. And I'm I'll also stick around if you have any questions, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Ms. Berg, I'm wondering, I don't believe that we have anybody else on the line right now. I know we have heard from a few people in writing. I know it's often our practice to summarize those comments. Is there anything that we have to be summarized to add at this point?
Madam Chair, related to the written comments, I'll just, you know, tell you that on your packet, page 128, we have comments from the Minnesota Land and Liberty Coalition supporting our change. They indicate that the amendment aligns with protecting citizens' property rights. And I believe the rest of the comments that I received were from the speakers. So I think we can, we can skip through.
The property owners that sent a letter as well, I don't hear an email. It's in there. I think it was from Meadowbrook Farms.
Okay, let's keep going. I don't have that one. I'm not sure if that came directly to the board.
It it did. I thought I too. That's okay.
I did not have that. So if you would like to, we'll just, by way of you mentioning it, that can be entered into the public record and we can include that in our packet.
Thank you. Either Ms. Berg or Ms. Benson, is there anything from what that you think needs to be clarified from what we just heard other? I'll ask you that first and then we'll go to members, questions and comments.
Madam Chair, related to decommissioning, as indicated by the speakers, the purpose of today's hearing is not to talk about the decommissioning amount. And sorry about that.
It's okay.
Yes, the as I've been, again, communicating with the Planning Commission and the Board a lot over the last year, we are, Stearns County is taking an active role in participating in the MPCAs End of Life or Solar Panels Work Group. I did testify in front of that work group a couple of months back. We are also having monthly conversations with the Public Utilities Commission. And so I guess the the moral of the story is we, our department at this point would be suggesting that we keep the $185,000 per one megawatt if the board wants to require a financial guarantee. I, you know, we we've certainly heard from from others that there could be an option of not even requiring a financial guarantee. You could take it to the extreme and look at how if a project were to be developed and not recommissioned and not changed out the panels and kept it online, the option then at that point would be the the permittee, which would be the solar company. They would be responsible for removing the solar panels and related equipment from the site. If they didn't fulfill the requirement, then the county would look to the landowner. So thirdly, then, would be the financial guarantee. So again, it it really is up to the board in terms of how much risk do we want to put into the third, the three-tier approach? So that's all I'm going to say about decommissioning. As for the proposed changes, I think that we we can highlight some of the decision and discussion that we had during our Shape Stearns Comprehensive Plan process over the last two years. So and this was also presented in your packet when we met with the Planning Commission. This is where obviously there's a lot of differences in opinion amongst the Planning Commission and the County Board. Do solar farms meet the goals of the Comprehensive Plan related to green energy? And or do they meet the goals of supporting agriculture? There's been some members of our Planning Commission, as you've heard and seen from the minutes and watching the meetings, believe that that solar farms do negatively impact ag. And there are some members believe that it positively impacts ag by allowing operators to have another level of income. So I would just keep that in mind when you're having a discussion today. Again, in front of you today would be to look at changing the solar farm requirements to allow up to three megawatts is permitted. You could obviously change that to be one or two. If nothing changes today, then it's status quo. We'll continue to process these as conditional uses. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Questions, thoughts from board members?
Ma'am?
Chair?
But the Commissioner or not, then Commissioner Persky?
Could we work the first part of that? Whether it should be up to the three megawatts should just be a what would it be, just a regular permit, permitted use? Because that would change then some of the language, depending on if we want to agree to that change.
Ms. Benson or Ms. Berg?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, yes, that would be likely the place that you'd like to start. And then if that decision is made, I can guide you on what else would need to change. So, again, Commissioner Notch, the proposal would be that up to 3-megawatts or if you change that number from 3 down to 2 or 1 would be a permitted use. So, those would be handled as a administrative permit.
I guess I'd be okay with going up to the 3 as an administrative permit. Because we really don't get any, you know, feedback from neighbors or anybody else on any of these projects. Plus, we seem to end up with two public hearings on them anyway.
Is that a motion or, okay?
I guess I'd make that a motion if that's how we have to start this.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? And then Joe will go to you. To keep us moving, I'll second that. Okay, discussion. Did you have questions, comments? And I know, I know- And I want to recognize that some of this gets complicated and out of our jurisdiction. That's one of the things that's hard with this. And really appreciate Ms. Persky, the, some of the issues you've brought up over time. Ms. Persky?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioner Notch, you know, we have got controversy here with a 1-meg and already proposing it to move to 3-meg, I think would maybe be somewhat reckless. In fact, I don't know if this is perhaps the appropriate measure to be taking in that. We've got a good number of issues laying out there that are controversial, I believe. We're trying to resolve this in a Zoom meeting. Well, we had the issues on the RV part where we just, we tabled that because we want to deal with that so that we can hear from all sides. I think this is a similar situation with the controversy that we have with the solar gardens right now.
Wait, wait, just really quickly, I'm just going to stop you on one point. We didn't, they are, because of that reason, we've got, we've got some more work. So, just, just to have said it, it wasn't because of the public.
And that is correct, too. I think we have more work to do here as well. With regards to, again, 3-meg, we've got some counties that don't even want to put in 1-meg and we're going to use the 3-meg permitted use. The, the Planning Commission has got obviously some strong mixed feelings with that and I don't believe we've ferred those things out. I see no problem with giving this more time, at least have the ability to take care of some of those issues. Likewise, I'm very concerned about the issue that we have with the legislature as far as the taxation on this property. And I'd like to see that resolved even before we would move this any way forward. So, I would rather not even continue the discussion and try to put together an ordinance for 3-megs when we struggle with putting it together for 1-meg. And I would just assume save us the time and the angst of putting together maybe a poor piece of material here opposed to putting the right piece of material together here. My option would be is to delay it and continue it at another time.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Right now, Joe, we're talking. So, let's, let's go ahead. But let's just wait and see kind of where we're at. Ms. Benson?
Madam Chair, I think one of the concerns that we have is the processing of conditional use permits. So, what's happened is as 1-megawatts, we've allowed 1-megawatts to move forward. We've processed them as conditional use permits. The Planning Commission in some cases has rejected those. And it comes to you as a board, you guys have determined that there was no need to reject and you adversely held your own public hearing and then approved. We have not seen a significant amount of other, I hear what Commissioner Persky is saying, but controversy, we aren't getting public testimony on that. So, I'm not sure what the controversy is except for, in my opinion, I think it is, it is the perception of the conflict with the Comprehensive Plan, ag versus solar. And I think what we were hearing in our Comprehensive Plan is that the intent was that they are complementary to each other and solar is being used as an alternative in agricultural areas. So, that was the premise that we moved these forward, was that it was an allowable use in agricultural areas based on the Comprehensive Plan that we just took a significant amount of time to do. So, I would say I think that's, that's the concern I have is in this particular case pushing it off. Now, if you want to allow for a single 1-megawatt versus 3-1-megawatts, I think that's a future discussion. But at least at a 1-megawatt, I think it would be consistent with what the Board has been doing over the past few months.
Ms. Or Notch?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I guess I'd be willing to make a ten minutes in my motion to drop it to the 1-megawatt. Just, you know, keep it simplistic and then we can vet out the other issues down the road.
And I'm amenable to that as well. I think it has been interesting that the complications that came up legislatively, which only are a small part of it relates to the change we're seeking, by being able to count the part of the land that is a solar panels as commercial. And the legislature is going to have to figure out some of that. I had gotten a chance to, to talk with the Senate Energy Committee Chair who was pretty blunt about that we are not going to have coal within, by 2035. We are not going to have nuclear probably around that same time. And so, for the baseload that both on a federal and a state level, that this is one of the areas that they really want to be working. And one of the things I love about our county is how thoughtful we have been with this. And whether ultimately the legislature changes the solar garden or works with XL and other, that is something we can advocate on. That is something that they need to figure out. But the 1-meg certainly seems like it not only fits in with all of the testimony we got to our comp plan update, original comp plan, the comp plan update and what we have heard along the way. So, that seems to be a reasonable one while we can wait for the rest of this to figure out what's really available, what makes sense. Commissioner Mergen, did you want to say something? I see you in the chat.
I'm fine. I was just responding to Mike.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was concerned that Commissioner Mergen couldn't, couldn't hear us. I saw him going in and out. So, I'm glad he's here.
Oh, good. Commissioner Mergen, do you have any thoughts you want to share on this matter?
I have a question. If we go to 1-megawatt, if we have 1-megawatt and then they put in another 1-megawatt next to that, is that property now called 2-megawatts or is it still would fit those criteria?
Ms. Benson? That would still be 1-megawatt and I think, which would be generally leading us to a conditional use permit. So, if we make the change to a single 1-megawatt as permitted use, then anything above that would go to conditional use. And we would still look at that as individual 1-megawatt based on the ownership and the process that currently exists.
So, I've got a question with that because I don't know-
Taxation is completely different.
Right, so, and Commissioner, I don't know if this is your question, but I have this question, is if we change this to 1-megawatt, the initial 1-megawatt solar farm would go through a permitted use. If they want to add an additional one, well, it would be an additional 1-megawatt object because it would be 2-megawatts on the property. It would go through the conditional use permit, correct?
That's correct.
This language, though, if we did that? I'm sorry. Ms. Berg?
Madam Chair, yes, you're correct. And I actually have it highlighted on the screen. So, if the change was made not exceeding 1-megawatt on a separate parcel, so we would change that. And as you've indicated, if you were to adopt the change and there would be more than 1-megawatt proposed on a parcel, regardless of ownership of the solar farm, it would become a conditional use permit, as would it become a conditional use permit if we are within a quarter mile of the municipality. And we did talk about that at our ordinance meeting in terms of giving cities input on those sorts of discussions.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Mergen, did you have a follow-up question on that?
I didn't know that.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion that's in front of us, which would be going to permanent, the permitted process per 1-megawatt? And anything over to conditional?
Madam Chair, the initial motion was for 3. Steve, did you officially amend that then?
He did, and I seconded that. So, it's now officially at 1. Okay, members, I think Commissioner Lenzmeyer, if you were chairing right now, you'd tell us we've had a lot of conversation on this. I certainly don't want to stop conversation, but I think perhaps the horse might be ready for us to vote. Thought you'd laugh at that. Do you have anything you want to say, Commissioner Lenzmeyer? You're muted.
Nothing. It was fun to listen. I don't have any, any strong feelings on this other than in the long run, how this plays out is, I think the real problems with this will be taking these things down. But I have no clue. I'm trying to predict human behavior by projecting what the issues might be.
Yes, it's kind of like I was talking to somebody recently about we updated our furnace to have it be more energy efficient and now something had to be done with our old furnace. It's kind of like those types of things. I will say Senator Sanjim, when I asked him about that, said they can be recycled now, but they are going to continue to work on that. I think for all of us, it's something we need to keep their feet on the, you know, feet to the fire on. It's important. Mr. Schreifel, I think we're ready to vote. Do you want to take the roll?
Sure. District 2? Nay. District 3? Aye. District 4? Lee?
Lee, you're muted.
Aye.
District 5?
Aye.
District 1?
Aye.
Passes 4 to 1?
Members, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schreifels. Thank you, Randy. Members, are you good to go for us to move to our ag employee housing and then take a break or do you need a break now?
Do we have to, should we go through the changes?
Oh, yes. I'm so sorry about that. Let's go through those changes.
Yes, Madam Chair, in relooking at this, there really isn't anything that you need to, unless you just want to, need to go through them specifically. But based on the change that you made related to the 1-megawatt, everything that's included here would need to be changed except for the screening. You would not have to change that, but we are recommending that you consider that. We're also recommending a setback change from 10 feet to 50 feet. That would be a separate choice from the decision you just made. The areas listed here in the purple, that is now required to be in the ordinance based on the vote that was just taken. And unless you object to the wetland review and the NHIS review, that, that would stay in. Decommissioning again is basically just carrying over what a condition on the administrative permit would need to have. So, Madam Chair, you could certainly, by point of order, adopt the rest of the changes by motion unless there's objection or questions on the screening set or the setback section.
Okay, Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm probably one of the least likely people that is big on this whole solar thing. But, you know, let's, talking about this decommissioning and not that I'm a big proponent of this, but has staff looked at the, or gave consideration? So, if on this decommissioning, is there, would there be a possibility where like every year you would add to, let's say, a fund? So, by year 20, if the decommissioning fee is 200,000, so every year 10,000, the company has to give to the county to, let's say, put in escrow. So, at the end of 20 years, the 200,000 would be there? Is there any, would there be any relevance to that? Or is it easy for the county to track it all up front and deal with it 20 years from now?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, you're hitting on something that obviously the Public Utilities Commission is doing right now for large solar and wind projects and all of their, their permits. As far as the county tracking and getting that money, I think we would be concerned with how that would work. I would suggest that the Board consider at least for the 1-megawatt systems that, that are now going to be permitted, that you do, you do stay with the 185,000 or basically the number that the Public Utilities Commission and or MPCAs recommending at any given time. I do understand that there's uncertainty related to that and to the solar farms. But I believe, and I think the state's take on that is until we have more information, the safest approach is to require it upfront. Now, if you have a project that is greater than 1-megawatt, that is a conditional use permit coming to the Planning Commission and the County Board, property, the property owners and the applicants can certainly propose something different to the Planning Commission and the County Board on a case-by-case basis. Again, I think it's very challenging once something's in the ground for us to send an invoice and ask for, you know, an escrow each year to raise that, that amount. Counties are not doing that. I can tell you statewide counties aren't getting it all upfront. It's obviously the easiest approach and may not be the long-term approach, but I think it's the best approach at this time.
Commissioner Notch, I had a similar question. It was kind of like, is there something different we could do that wouldn't be also very burdensome? And it sounds like, or right now, maybe not, but it's something, if another tool becomes available, we could add it perhaps. And Commissioner Notch, given your background, can you even come up with some other ideas? Commissioner Notch?
Madam Chair, I guess then I would make a motion to accept these administrative changes if that's what is required at this point.
Okay, is there a second?
I can second that with a, with a, I'm not suggesting to change the motion, but a thought that we can hold in the long run on this discussion here is if we build, if we come up with an idea to build a fund for decommissioning, I, I could see that, but make it so that there's incentive for, in the system or designed into it so that the decommissioning is taken care of by the owner. And one of the things that would have some merit is that would be a way for the owner to recover some of that fund. But I don't know, I haven't thought about it in any detail on how that would be designed. But I would think that for future discussions, that would have some merit, just my thought.
So, we do have a motion and a second. I noticed that one of the people, Mr. Watts, would like to make a comment on decommissioning. I don't know if you have an idea. If you have an idea, you might want to tell us that. Otherwise, I think this is a longer term thing that we'll be looking at, Mr. Watts.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just very quickly,
Mr. Watts?
I wanted to add that, to, I guess, to the public record, some clarification that this is actually already happening in other counties. In other words, there are counties that do not require upfront decommissioning surety requirements. One example would be Clay County, where a, a solar conditional use permit requires that the project owner fund a decommissioning surety annually between years five, six and 25. So they split the surety into those years and an annual payment is made each year. So that by year 25, they have the amount in full, because community solar gardens have all of their agreements through years one through 25. There's, there's pretty much certain profitability and, and operational life of a minimum of 25 years. Other examples would be, you know, like Redwood County doesn't require any decommissioning surety. Goodhue County simply requires that the, that the decommissioning agreement occurs between the landowner and the project owner. So in other words, the county takes a hand off, hands off approach and simply says, this is your land, you can decide. And then the landowner can, the landowner and the project owner can separately enter into a financial surety. So those are just a few examples of other counties that have different solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, and that was, I guess, going to Lee's point, the kind of the same thought process was, you know, this should really be something the landowner, you know, probably inputs into the agreement, you know, more so than the county even. But, yeah, I think it's something that's going to be working process and hopefully it'll get some resolution.
So it sounds like now, given the motion on the floor, unless somebody has a different ideas for this right now, it, we would be voting on keeping it the way it is right now, but continue to look at it and perhaps have a discussion at another time about a different way to do this. I'm seeing some head nodding. Okay, okay, all right. Are there any other thoughts or questions on the motion before us?
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, Joe, I couldn't see you. Commissioner Persky?
Say, Angie or Shelley, relating to then the wetlands and wildlife habitat, will one meg then trip an application to go to the DNR or not?
Ms. Berg?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, yes, any size would require, would still trip that review.
Okay, and then what, what about the fencing? As far as height, I see, I know there's discussion about what's appropriate fencing and when's it appropriate fencing? Again, for wildlife movement, what are we looking at doing?
So I believe that's in here, isn't it, Ms. Berg? Can you speak to?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, I know we talked about that at the ordinance committee a bit as well. I would say that DNR is working on, on coming up with guidance for local governments. It's not, it's not here right now. I've reached out to DNR wildlife managers on this particular issue and I've gotten no response or recommendation. So at this point, we need to rely on the NHIS review and have the DNR through that process give us recommendations on fencing, wildlife, et cetera. Again, for monitoring this.
I'm actually good with that. I'm, I'm okay with that. I would rather have it flexible rather than in, in concrete. Because I think depending upon the situation with the wetland and the habitat, you could have different types of fencing there. So that's, that's, that's fine.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. That, that is helpful. And I think I, I was thinking about a conversation we had, not at our last meeting, but the one before, where Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you were talking about our goal is maybe things won't be perfect, but they'll be better. And this, this ought to be helpful as we move forward. And we may come back and revisit some of this at some point. So thank you, thank you, Commissioner Persky. Okay, Mr. Schreifels, I think we're ready.
Okay, district three.
Hi.
District four.
Hi.
District five.
Hi.
District one.
Hi.
District two.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Do we have people on the phone for the next part already? Think it, nope. Okay, so how about if we take a brief break here? We're a little bit past what you had estimated that time. Everybody can refilled or, or whatever else they need to do. So we'll be back in hopefully five. Okay, it looks like we are moving on now to the agricultural employee housing. Shelley and Angie, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Angie, there. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Berg.
Yes, so again, this is a continuation of our implementation of SHAPE-STERNS, our comprehensive plan. There was discussion during our comprehensive plan meetings about supporting our agricultural community. And one of those ways would be to allow a bit different and more flexible options for agricultural employee housing. And so what I have on the screen here and what I actually emailed to the commissioners yesterday and was also in your packet are basically a comment and response from Minnesota Milk Producers Association. Commissioner Notch was kind enough to meet with myself and Lucas Solstrom of MMPA after the last meeting, got continued until today. So again, I'm just going to roll through each of these comments and I will, I'll pause if there's any questions after each comment. And at some point, there'll be a few decisions needing to be made. But again, MMPA overall accepts and recommends these changes, but with a few comments. So the first comment from the Milk Producers Association relates to a conflict between our migrant and seasonal worker housing and then this proposal. The department does agree with that and would propose option B, which is to eliminate the migrant seasonal worker housing. And it would basically would be in line with the egg employee housing. So we're not eliminating something that, that wouldn't become an option under this proposal. It would be basically the same. Comment number two really gets to how do you want to permit egg employee housing, right? So as proposed, it's a conditional use permit. MMPA is recommending that the board considers allowing employee housing as a permitted use. And so underlined would be our option, our recommendation would be option B. Steve can certainly speak on that as well. Lucas and Steve and I came up with this option, which would include allowing egg employee housing as a permitted use if it is accessory to an animal feedlot. If it is not accessory to an animal feedlot, however, and it would meet the definition of an egg operation, for example, crop farming, then a conditional use permit would be required. The reason that we are recommending that in particular is because we have a lot of agricultural operations that are non-feedlot in Stearns County. And to, to keep those as, as permitted or to allow those as permitted would be something that I don't know that we're ready for, to be honest. So we were recommending kind of a tiered approach. Comment three basically touches on what I just said. Again, if it's, if someone wants an egg employee housing and it's accessory to an egg operation, meeting this definition, it would then become a conditional use permit. Comment three, we do support the MMPA's recommendation of amending the proposal to talk about sleeping, eating and sanitation facilities. Their proposal is a little bit cleaner. Comment number five talks about where these structures should be located. The current proposal indicates that they should be located in the existing farmyard. The option B would be allowing, basically egg employee housing shall be located in a location acceptable to the board under scenarios where it's a conditional use permit. Under scenarios where it's a permitted use, then the egg employee housing would be required to be in the existing farmyard or it would then be tripped into a conditional use permit. So basically, if you're a feedlot and you're building it within your farmyard, it's permitted. If you're a feedlot and you're not building it within your farmyard, it would be conditional. Again, the idea is that you give the public and the planning commission board an opportunity to review the location, to make sure it meets all the other goals of the ordinance without it being just permitted. Comment number six talks about temporaries and temporary secondary single family residential dwelling unit. So the proposal is to eliminate the provision, which would allow temporary single family dwelling units or an accessory dwelling on the same parcel. We're going to be talking about accessory dwelling units in a bit. Again, the original proposal basically said you couldn't have either of the other options. This proposal would say you could. So you could have your farmhouse, you could have your egg employee housing, and you could have either an accessory dwelling unit or a temporary secondary single family residential dwelling unit. So I don't expect everyone to clearly understand that. What I'm saying is that this change, number D, would give more options. And there, there are many options under current ordinance and this would just be extending that. Comment number seven, I think we're getting close to the end, relates to a signed statement that the registration shall include a statement that egg employee housing should not be rented out to other individuals. We are recommending option A, which would be to leave as proposed. Again, the intent of the ordinance is to meet the needs of the agricultural community by providing labor near the farm. If we are going to start allowing housing to be rented out to individuals not employed in the egg operation, then I think we need to start looking at, does that meet the original intent of the, that provision and the comprehensive plan by allowing non-farm housing in the egg? Comment number eight, and I believe lastly, would be related to the inspections. And I think Lucas at MMPA also had a great recommendation on that. Basically, we would amend the ordinance to reference compliance with the Stearns County rental ordinance and therefore not requiring an annual inspection of these structures. So with that, I gave you a lot. Again, as underlined under each comment is the, the recommendation that we would ask the board to consider. And there is nobody to speak to this hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you. So seeing that, Commissioner Notch, did you have anything you wanted to add, given? So seeing that, Commissioner Notch, did you have anything you wanted to add, given you worked on this as well?
No, just that, you know, Minnesota, Lucas from Minnesota Milk was very, you know, helpful in giving us his opinions and, and kind of being, you know, open. I think Angie can probably verify this. I think he appreciated the efforts that have been made by the county to try and come up with an opportunity to make this a possibility. So I think there's, was good discussion.
Thank you. Board members, questions, comments?
Madam Chair, you know, I do think where this is in the right, this is in the right direction, and I, I very much like to support it. My concern goes back even to something that we talked earlier in the meeting, and that is like with mobile homes and temporaries. What I, what I would fear, an unintended consequence would be that, you know, we would have mobiles that are in ill-repair, you know, gas leaks, water leaks, issues with mold, maybe infestation of critters, and, you know, it's substandard housing, and, and I'm concerned about that. So, you know, again, we, I, I really like the idea of having an opportunity for, for workers to be present on the property, but I, I, that's would be my concern. And Angie, I don't know if you want to address that issue or not.
I was just going to ask her about that, Joe. Ms. Berg?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky. So again, the, the recommendation would be to eliminate the inspection requirement and refer to compliance with the Stearns County rental ordinance. And I think the idea behind that was, why are we holding a farmer more accountable than someone who rents out their home to a non-farm, to a non-farm employee, or holding them to a different standard or a higher standard? Because our Stearns County rental ordinance currently does not require inspections. Secondly, with relation to the mobile home provisions that we talked about earlier, that's why this is, this, we're very careful in, this option could include a mobile home or it could include a stick-built structure. And so the board can make a decision. If you want to see annual inspections of ag employee housing facilities, then, then the last comment, number nine, would need to be changed. And then we would continue to include that provision in the ordinance.
Other thoughts, feedback, questions? Either on that, go ahead, Jeff, Commissioner Mergan.
Sorry, I would just have one comment. I did have a large dairy farmer, this is a couple of years back already, approached me about the possibility of building an eight-plex on their farm for their workers. And, and just maybe you want to comment on that a little bit.
Ms. Berg?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mergan. So the proposal would, I can zoom in on it a little bit. Basically, it would be allow up to four, four attached dwelling units, or 16 beds in a group living quarter situation. So if the desire would be to increase this number from four to eight, that would be certainly an option for the board to consider today. The proposal is currently at four. I, I did, I should have said, when I, when we started this conversation, they did reach out to Dairy Advisory Committee, Feedlot Review Committee. I reached out to various lenders in the area in terms of some of the requirements we had with removal of the structure. I did also hear from a couple of large dairies in the county that really support this change. They didn't pick up on the number and, and ask for something greater, but that does not mean there's not a need or desire.
I think a four would be a good compromiser.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion too, not to increase it. First, let's, let's kind of walk through and see what happens first, and then we can always address, you know, any other increased changes in the future.
All right, and then going back to Commissioner Persky's concern, which I think we all would share, we want to make sure that people are, are living in safe and decent housing. Are people, are members fine with leaving it the way it is currently being proposed to us? Or do you want to do something different? I mean, we could be monitoring, what's, what's your preference?
Personally, I think the rules have to be the same for everyone.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Mergan. Commissioner Notch, I see you raised your hand.
Yep, I would agree. Just keep it the, keep it on a level playing field.
So level playing field, and we'll continue to, to monitor this, just to, to see where things are at. And if we start hearing issues, it may be something we want to revisit.
Madam Chair? Angie, then, does, does that mean that you could then bring a mobile into a farm site and just put it up and use it for, for housing, for workers? I mean, there would be, there, that would be okay. Because at the present time, you can't just bring a mobile home and put it up onto a farmstead, correct?
Ms. Berg?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, actually, under the, the current structure of the ordinance, you are allowed an administrative permit up to 15 years to bring a mobile home in for farm help, or farm labor. And so that's already an option. And per earlier conversations related to mobile homes, what they bring in has to meet the building, manufacturer building code, and it will have to be signed off by compliant if the proposal we talked about earlier changed. So it's, it's not as if the manufactured homes moving in are unregulated. It's basically the annual inspection would not be required if you would choose option B. We would still make sure that the mobile home, well, hopefully, with some of the changes we discussed earlier, would make it easier for us to make sure that those homes that are coming in are safe and do meet code. But that, again, we'll have more conversation in a future meeting on that.
Okay.
Okay, members, is somebody ready to make a motion?
Just an observation.
Thank you, Commissioner Lunsby.
Madam Chair, I hate to make it sound like the whole woke movement is starting to rub off on me, but I would appreciate at least in our minds that we differentiate between a mobile home, which is an outdated term, manufactured home. With the manufactured homes now, the regulatory criteria that they have to meet, I would offer many times exceeds what a stick-built structure has to meet if for no other reason than the unit has to have the experience of going down the highway. What's, why is that a big deal? It's a lot of vibration, you know, that you don't have with a stick-built structure. Oh, well, if you do have, we got a way bigger problem. You know, we now have earthquakes in Stearns County. But anyway, the, the point being is that the standard that they've got to meet, or the standards are, they are significant. So the, that might be a solution that we have to keep in mind. Sorry for the rant here. I'll take two after and get to that.
Commissioner Lunsby. That, that's actually a pretty important point. The, the manufact, what manufactured homes need to do now is, is a, is a higher standard. And I do want the record reflect Commissioner Lunsby's wokeness. So these are all really good points. What would you like to do? Does somebody have a motion?
Well, while we're waiting for somebody to formulate a motion, I would, I, I just want to, I appreciate Steve's effort staying in touch with the ag community. If there's any of the five of us that have those connections, it's him. So thank you, Steve.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Notch, motion perhaps?
Sure, I'll make that motion. I thought maybe Commissioner Lunsby would, but.
I thought maybe he was too. So the, the motion to accept the underlying.
Staff recommendation.
Yep, the staff recommendations. I just want to make sure, I thought maybe that's why people were hesitant, was that it might have been a little unclear. So, okay, we have a motion to accept the staff recommendations that have also been worked out with Minnesota Milk. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, Commissioner Lunsby. Yep, you couldn't get him to move it, Steve, but you got him to second it. Okay, members, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Schreifels?
Sure, District Four, we, hi. District Five, hi. District One, hi. District Two, hi. District Three, hi. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so members, I believe where our status is, is that we have completed the, the ag employee housing and the solar components of the proposals, and we are continuing the public hearing on the manufactured homes for some additional work. Staff, will you be able to bring that back to us at the next meeting?
Madam Chair, Angie Berg, actually, we have a few other items to, to go through today, rural tourism, ag-oriented business.
Our short agenda, okay, please continue.
Okay, so I'm not going to go through these unless there's any specific questions. Again, the planning commission and the board did vet these changes through the comprehensive plan process and also at our special meeting. And so unless there's any questions on rural tourism, ag-oriented business, or accessory dwelling units, our recommendation would be to adopt as proposed.
Thank you, I think I got through because they were not specifically named in our short version of the agenda. Members, did, does anybody have any questions or concerns on these? We did do a lot of work on this.
Madam Chair, I have another question. Angie, you know, in my district, I have concern of just one thing about the rural tourism because we ran into some conflict with outdoor events. I'm just wondering how that would impact outdoor events as far as operation hours. In particular, we have a place that wants to have outdoor concerts, and they, they had requested to move from 10 o'clock to midnight was one of their requests. Does this include operation hours?
Ms. Berg?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, so the proposal would, would include this rural tourism to be a conditional use permit, and therefore, hours of operation are being proposed as an added option for the planning commission as item M, that hours of operation shall not have an adverse impact on adjacent property. So the planning commission and the board would be able to set those hours of operation during the public hearing process.
Okay, so, so what you're saying that, then, it, it would be a permitted use, but it, but it would still come through the planning commission?
Ms. Benson?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, the proposal currently is a conditional use.
Okay. That, that, okay, that, I'm fine with that then, because I was going to ask also about attendance as far as numbers.
So it sounds, at least at this point, what is in front of us would still go through the, the planning commission.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to make a motion, Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and then move this item on rural tourism.
Okay, do you want to, are we, I guess we're doing them separately, let's do that. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Lunsby, seconds. Seeing no further question, I think we're ready to take the roll.
District Five, hi. District One, hi. District Two, hi. District Three, hi. District Four, hi. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Yes, Madam Chair, the next item is a slight change to our ag-oriented business category, and this would be to become more in line with the rural tourism option that was just allowed. So if you, if you're an ag-oriented business currently, you would not be able to have an eating and drinking establishment within your business, nor a law lodging. So again, we talked about this during the discussion of rural tourism, and so allowing these two would become more consistent with the rural tourism, but still allowing an ag-oriented business under the provisions that we currently allow.
And this would also, I mean, a, a conditional use permit, or is that correct? Okay, it's helpful for us to know which, which way we're going with each of these. Questions, yes, Commissioner Notch?
Madam Chair, I'd motion to approve the request.
Great, thank you. Okay.
I'll second.
Commissioner Notch moves, Commissioner Mergan seconds. I think seeing no other, further discussion, I think we're ready for the roll.
District One, hi. District Two, hi. District Three, hi. District Four, hi. District Five, hi. Motion passes unanimously.
Right. Now we move to accessory dwelling units, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, again, this is a combination of ideas and recommendations from the comprehensive plan discussion. So accessory dwelling units, which are going to be allowed as, as both attached and detached as proposed in the ordinance currently. We are proposing that attached would be permitted and detached would be conditional, but that both would be permitted in the ag districts. So I have that up on the heading right here. And so unless there's any questions on this, again, there, we did not receive any public comments on this request.
Members? Comments, questions, or, or a motion?
I'll move the recommendation, Mergan.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergan. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll put the recommendation.
I think that was, is that correct? Okay, motion in a second. Unless there's any further discussion, I think we're ready to take the roll.
District Two, hi. District Three, hi. District Four, hi. District Five. Steve, hi. District One, hi. Hi. That also passes unanimously.
Right.
I wonder what we're doing wrong.
I guess we've been talking about everything for a while. Commissioner Notch?
Madam Chair, just maybe a request on the agenda. If there's somebody here for that public hearing, do you think we should move that ahead of the parks?
I think that's a good, is there somebody here for the public hearing?
Just the owner, but not, he doesn't need to make any comments if he doesn't need to. So, no, there is no public.
Since he's here, it would make some sense if members are amenable for us to do that first, and he doesn't need to wait.
You're the chair.
All right, well, I think that's what we're going to do then. Thank you, Commissioner Smire. So just as we're transitioning for that, we have completed everything that has been brought before us so far, except for the, the, the manufactured home portion. We will continue that portion solely of the public hearing. So just as we're transitioning for that, we have completed everything that has been brought before us so far, except for the the manufactured home portion. We will continue that portion solely of the public hearing, and staff will be coming back to us with recommended language at their next meeting. Now we'll go ahead and move to the next public hearing, which is considered off sale application and license submitted by Jessica Westling on behalf of Westling Entertainment, doing businesses pro like Budge. Mr. Schreifel.
So this is a new owner, and also it's required by state law that we have a public hearing. We have no comments on this, and it's been approved by the Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office, and all the paperwork and fees have been paid, and the owner may be on, I guess they can't see that. But doesn't necessarily want to make any comments unless we need to.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and open this public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this provision, liquor license application and license? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Hearing and sitting nine, close the public hearing. Members, what would you? What's your draw? Do we have an option?
I'd move approval.
To approve the license.
Okay. I think we had a motion and a second at the same time. Commissioner Mergan, Commissioner Linspire seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I think we're ready for the roll.
District One.
Hi.
District Two.
Hi.
District Three.
Hi.
District Four.
Hi.
District Five.
Hi.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. All right, members, are you needing a break now, or shall we take up parks next? I just want to do a check. Not seeing any yeses, so let's go ahead and go back to parks. I know that Mr. was signing on here.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning. It's still morning.
Good morning. All right, I am sharing a screen as well. Just bear with me a second while I get organized.
That is fine.
All righty, thank you. All right, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Ben Anderson, Stearns County Parks Director. Today's item, each one can be found on packet pages 146 through 150, and is regarding the consideration of a potential park property. The Stearns 2040 Comprehensive Plan contains many goal and policy areas that support pursuing this property as potential county parkland. One of these goals reads as follows: Seek to expand and enhance the existing park system by acquiring property as opportunities arise in order to meet the goal of 20 acres per 1,000 residents and to add county parkland to the system. Also, according to the county comprehensive plan and based off the evaluation of current park acreage compared to the standards of 20 acres per 1,000 residents, Stearns County should add 415 acres of parkland to its system to meet the identified guidelines. This property is located just south of Cold Spring City Limits in Wakefield Township and lies along the shores of where Canals Lake, Chain Lakes transitions back into the Sauk River. The property consists of approximately 298 acres. There's approximately 128 acres currently being farmed, 38 acres of wetland bog, 2 acres of an unnamed lake, and 130 acres of land that includes wooded or partially wooded forest or oak savanna slash pasture type ground. The property also has approximately 8,000 feet of shoreline, about half on Canals Lake and half on the Sauk River. As I have now had the opportunity to tour the property twice with one of the owners, it certainly offers an ample opportunity for a variety of outdoor recreational activities. These include, but are not limited to, a boat landing, shore fishing, swimming beach, sledding hills, trails such as mountain bike, fat tire biking, hiking, cross-country tree, cross-country skiing, et cetera, unlimited special hunts, and much, much more. The property also is also host to many different habitat and ecological niches that include wetlands, tamarack bog, remnant prairie, oak savanna species, many springs, and rolling hills and ridges. The farmland, I am told, is marginal as it is light and sandy and could possibly be restored back into native prairie and or oak savanna habitat. Another noteworthy consideration is that there is little to no public property located along the Chain Lakes. The Park Commission reviewed this property at their March 10th meeting and motioned that the county continue to pursue this potential park property. The family has completed an appraisal on the property, however, an appraisal that names the county as an intended user has not been completed, and thus the next steps would be to have an appraisal completed if the county board believes that this property is worth pursuing as county parkland. I do have Pheasants Forever has offered to pay for the appraisals. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Mergan?
The 20 acres per 1,000 residents of parkland, it just says parkland, correct?
Right.
Doesn't say Stearns County Parkland, it says parkland. So have you added in all of the parkland of townships, cities, and any other parkland of any type? School districts and so on?
Sir Anderson?
No, we have not, you know, just been going based off of what it says in the county comprehensive planet. Comprehensive plan, it does say that the county should consider adding 415 acres of parkland.
Think we should consider the other part too, if that's been ignored. And again, realize, and I realize right now that you're saying this is marginal cropland, that's fine, but it is 100, other 120 acres of farmland. If this would go to counties, this is again part of what I constantly refer to as a death by a thousand cuts to the taxpayer. More property, not paying taxes, costing more from the taxpayers to maintain. Bottom line, it's a tax increase on everybody else that still exists, the other properties. And we've got roads and bridges that need to be taken care of. That should be our number one priority.
Ben, what would it take to give to calculate the the number of total acres in the county?
Of like township and city parkland typically, you know, we, you know, the city parkland isn't included, you know, because they they're a different type of park. They offer a completely different, you know, like your ball fields and things of that nature. You don't typically see your natural resource based parks as much within a city. The townships typically are not offering, you know, parkland that is as extensive or has the amount of recreational opportunity that a county park provides. To answer your question directly, Madam Chair, you know, I would have to work with the townships, possibly with the Assessor's Office and the GIS team to figure out what that acreage is.
It likely could be a helpful item for us to know. I'm guessing, could be wrong, that it's not a very big number, just having been to a number of those, but it would be helpful for us as as our plan as a particular number, going back to Commissioner Mergan's point on that, that particular part. And so certainly recognize, you know, I was thinking about, especially with COVID, our parks or trails have been lifesavers for so many people right now. And I also recognize and I support the goal of making sure that we've got good experiences throughout our county, not having them clustered in any one area. So I don't know how long that would take, but it would be useful as we move forward. Other members, questions, comments, thoughts?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Persky.
Say, Ben, the request you have here, that's to move forward with an appraisal on that, is that correct? And you're saying that Pheasants Forever would be able to foot that bill as far as moving forward with the assessment?
That is correct. Pheasants Forever has offered to pay for the appraisal.
So at this time, you're not asking, right, you're asking for us for the appraisal. Commissioner Persky, sorry, I just want to make sure I understood.
Yep. Yeah, and that's and that's what I'm saying is that I take a look at the size of this parcel. I don't know if it, I don't think this, the county is interested in making an investment to pay cash for a piece this large. However, I think there are other entities that would be very much interested in it, and we might have an interest in this portion of this. Also, as far as that chain is concerned, there is a boat landing on the to the north east of the piece that we're looking at. However, there's a no wake zone in there, and so it's rather problematic for for people to actually put in a boat and then have access to the chain. So the west side of the property and or even a piece on the north side would be advantageous perhaps to get a boat landing in there of which, you know, if we're looking at down the road of having a potential piece of parkland, that would be something, or even making the recommendation that the DNR purchased that and making that an access to to the chain, which would then again benefit so many people in Stearns County. So I, if it's not going to cost the county anything to do the appraisal, I would be willing to move it forward to go ahead and have Pheasants Forever pay for the appraisal and then come back and see what takes place after that. That is the motion.
Okay, good. And before we get to a second, I'm just wondering, Mr. Anderson, Ben, could you tell us, I mean, we obviously got community input during our comprehensive plan. I was wondering with a new potential, new park like this, do we ever do any surveying among people and interest and support or lack thereof? Is that something that we do or is that?
Yeah, so I have, I've reached out to the township of Wakefield and I've talked to one of the supervisors, and this particular person had mentioned that they would be in favor of seeing this parcel as a parkland or a WMA or some sort of natural area, and that person has also indicated that he has had conversations with area residents that said that they would also support seeing this as some sort of parkland or natural area as well. There was, they have, the township has not taken any official action on that. They're kind of waiting to see what would happen at today's meeting and then potentially bring that up at their next township meeting to take an official action. But there has been, you know, we did reach out to some of the community around there to get some input on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And Commissioner Natch?
So at this point, it's just basically that we have the someone willing to pay for the appraisals. If if this comes up down the road, does this require a master plan to get funding, and what level of funding could potentially be gotten off of it?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Natch for that question. Yes, certainly, you know, with 8,000 feet of shoreline and 300 acres, it is not most likely going to be a potentially cheap acquisition. Funding sources that are potential, if this park would certainly, I believe, qualify as a regionally designated park through the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission, which is that legacy funding that Commissioner Natch mentioned. With that, we would would have to complete a master plan in order to be eligible for those funds, just like we did for Mississippi County Park here about a year ago. And that funding source, you know, there's about $9 million available to Greater Minnesota each year for that. Other possible funding sources for this include the LCCMR, which funds acquisitions such as this, and then there's also other state and federal sources that we could chase as well.
Can I ask a follow up question on that? If it potentially could be a WMA, is that something that there'd be a different component of our ownership perhaps, funding wise or?
Yeah, so the the state area wildlife manager did tour the property. He does have some some concerns with the amount of development that is around it and seeing it as a WMA, but he hasn't ruled it necessarily out as possibly being one. And, you know, I certainly think there may be some room for some conversation. We'd have to sit down with them to see if there would be, you know, maybe the county would potentially pursue 25, 50, 100 acres of it in the WMA, maybe the rest of it or something along those lines. That's certainly something we could consider.
That makes sense. You might want some buffer. Not non literal term. Commissioner Mergan?
Just a couple of things. There is another boat landing on the Chain Lakes, just on Highway 22, just to point that out. And then also, could you reconcile for me the photos that appear on page 149 and 150 in our packet? I'm having trouble putting the two together. Because they look totally different to me.
So the one, yes, go ahead.
Yes, can you explain them to us?
Right, so it is a bit confusing. I'm actually going to go back to this other map and zoom in on the interactive map here, and I will turn the aerial image back on. So it's actually two separate parcels that are being sold as one. This bottom parcel that you see highlighted right now is about 270 acres in size, and the one in the the one right along the river up here is about 23 acres in size. So that's how we get the 298 acres.
And then together, is that where you get to the 8,000 feet of shoreline?
Right, along that pole edge. So I apologize for that. I just didn't have a good way to.
A good clarifying question. Appreciate that. Commissioner Mergan, so we have a motion. Is there a second? I'm certainly willing to make a second, so I'll second. Any other questions or thoughts? The motion is to get an appraisal with Pheasants Forever would be paying.
Couldn't Pheasants Forever do this? Couldn't Pheasants Forever go ahead and do that on their own? Without Stearns County being involved?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, they could, but Pheasants Forever doesn't necessarily have the public ownership interest that the county mayor may or may not have at this time, along with the the state WMA. So, you know, go ahead.
No, I was just wondering, would they also have some challenges in obtaining grant funding?
In certain, certain grant funding, they would have some challenges with that. The funding that is available for like the WMA, the outdoor heritage funds, those could be utilized if it were to go towards like a WMA, but the issue that we run in for county parkland is it has to be open to all public hunting and fishing opportunities.
Folks.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, it hasn't been an intentional action, but there has been a bit of an avoidance. You've each touched upon this very, you know, very lightly, but I'm really thinking that with all of the parties that have been discussed in this, even though the discussion has been very brief, what we haven't done to any great extent is solicited partners or solicited entities that can assist in park development. And even though we haven't solicited those participants, we have had the opportunity to partner. We've got it in a number of our parks. We have entities such as interest groups and so forth that participate in the functions, activities, management of various aspects of our park, whether it be a ski club, whether it be an archery club, whether it be the, what do you call those bicyclists that do the terrain stuff? the, what do you call those bicyclists that do the terrain stuff? You get the idea. Point is, is that I think it would have merit going forward if we, on the front end, we start recruiting those folks to get them involved. And the, you know, the real cost of parks, think about it, the real cost of parks is not the purchase of the property. Purchase of the properties that we've, that Stearns County owns is a one-time deal. What's the real cost of parks? There's annual maintenance, there's annual staffing, there's annual costs. And over time, yeah, the reality is that's the most significant cost element, even though we don't talk about it much. Point is, is I don't know if at this stage, an appraisal is the appropriate step. But it doesn't hurt if we've got somebody that, or some entity that wants to do that. And in the meantime, let's be thinking or let's be talking or let's be, I don't know, soliciting other partners that could be involved in this. We have, we should be looking at more creative ways of doing this stuff. We can't sell parks, we can't sell nothing.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I think that's a really good. As, as we continue to move forward, how are we leveraging the, those different recreational citizen groups to be helping us with maintenance? How are they, how are they?
The local, the local felons don't come forward to ask us to build more jails.
Good point. Good point. Are we ready to vote? I think District Trifles were ready to vote.
District two. Hi. District three. District four. District five. Hi. District one.
Hi.
Passes 4-1.
I mean, yeah, I don't know if this is the appropriate step now, but doesn't hurt.
Yeah, I think, Ben, I'm trying to see if, yes, you're still here. So a couple of those thoughts were, one is if we could just have a better idea of how much other acreage parkwise as we go forward. And then Commissioner, I know that you already have, we have lots of good partners. What can we do to, to really reach out and solicit engagement and involvement?
For sure. Yeah, and thank you for your time. You know, this I really view as the next stepping stone to make, you know, maybe a, a potential more firm decision once we get those numbers to see if the, if the family's even interested in continuing based off the appraisal and/or if the county is so. But I will certainly look into those other things as we.
Thank you. Thank you. Members, we're scheduled to have a brief five-minute break. Are you ready for that or do you want to move into environmental services? I can't hear everybody.
Keep going.
All right. Is everybody else? All right, let's go. All right, environmental services. Ms. Benson, it's good to see you after such a long time.
I figured you.
Ms. Berg, same thing. We do, we miss, we missed.
I thought I would come back.
Um, go ahead. First item.
Packet page 162, which is item J1, which is the cozy corners item, which was a, I'm going to use the word continuation. It was previously taken off of consent. And so now we should be looking at any items or questions that needed to be raised on this item.
Ms. Berg, just really quickly, I think, I don't know if this is a clarification or not, but for people to remember, we voted on the consent agenda last time. But Commissioner Mergen was having trouble with hearing. He voted against it, but we think it was because he had questions or concerns or wanted to bring up something. So members, we are continuing because just out of respect, since Commissioner Mergen, you were not able to actually voice anything. We are kind of back to where we would have been on this particular item. The planning commission has recommended these changes. And Commissioner Mergen?
I guess I, what I was going to do was poll this for review because I'm disagreeing with the, all of a sudden the changes. I thought this was over and done with and taken care of. There have been some real, real issues here, the no trespassing signs. There have been documented evidence of window breaking and other vandalism to cars and theft of property, mainly a fish from a private fish pond of the neighbor. And, you know, I've been lucky to have made lawsuits here and I just, I'm just feeling that this is, that this shouldn't be allowed to have this change or in my mind, it shouldn't be changed. That's, I would, I would vote against it.
Okay, Ms. Benson or Ms. Berg?
Madam Chair, at this point, so what we're saying is the, the question or the concern that was brought up by Commissioner Mergen was related to the, the signage. We do know that there is a condition specifically for the fencing. And that will be, will be put up, but I think Commissioner Mergen's question is related to the signs. If, if, as an entity want to make a change to that, typically what we would do is bring that back for a public hearing to address that change in the sign.
Madam Chair, I can respond to the signs.
Okay, and Commissioner Persky, and then Commissioner Notch, go ahead.
Okay, our dialogue in the planning commission about the signs is that what's stated there is, you know, you know, placing them in at, at 1,000 feet, well, those are, that's almost a quarter mile apart. And it, it's not that big of a deal in that the signs would actually be, I don't know, maybe three or four signs on the entire piece. And the cost of the signs is what, let's say, $2, $3 apiece? And that is a, a request being put on the property owner. Well, the property owner should not be requesting no trespassing on the neighbor's property. And, and this is a, a situation too, where does the county need to be involved with neighbors? By all means, the property owner could put as many no trespassing signs on the other side of the fence. Or that he could have a conversation with the person that owns the fence and make a request to put adequate signing that's on there. So to me, this, this no trespassing request for signs is, is something that really is a non-issue for, for us as a county. And that's something that neighbors should be able to work out. Because I should not have to be putting up no trespassing signs for my neighbor. So, and, and again, it's, the, the fact that they would be almost a quarter mile apart would be insignificant.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. My question related to that south line, at the last meeting, there was a fence proposed to be placed there, correct?
Ms. Berg?
Madam Chair, yes, I was just going to try to get to that drawing.
Because if there wasn't, then on the south side, you could propose that Mr. Meyer put up the no trespassing sign so people don't walk into the campground, you know, from the south. You know, because that would protect him from trespassers, you know, as well as if, because he owns the land, I believe, south of there. Even if he sells it, you know, he doesn't want people trespassing in his campground where there's no fence and they can walk right in. That would be the only question I would have there. If there's a fence there, then it's a non-issue. But if there's not going to be a fence on that south line, then maybe Mr. Meyer should put one there so people don't sneak into the campground with no ramifications.
Angie?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Notch, I'm just pulling up the, the map and Shelley might need to help me. I know Jennifer's not on the call today. I was not at this planning commission meeting. So again, typically we'll have a public hearing if you don't want to concur with the planning commission. But if that weighs in on your decision, Commissioner Notch, then we could certainly try to get you that answer.
Yeah, no, just as a point of reference, I guess is why I was stating that where it would be the property owner of Mr. Meyer.
I believe we did have fencing on both the south and the west. I'm looking at my east side, yeah. So there's, there's, there's fencing in, along his boundary. I think that was the key, is having that fencing.
Yep, then I concur.
Okay. Motion?
I was just disappointed in the overall process. Not only was this approved with 14 conditions, but even some of the conditions had conditions. And I think that in our effort to try to placate all the local objections, we entered into overkill. The, to adjust some of those of those conditions, I don't think that's an unreasonable, at this point, that's unreasonable to take that action. So if this makes it, you're not going to make this livable for all concern, more livable for all concerns. But gee, at some point, the reality is, is our actions do not need to go into an area of land use abuse.
Thank you, Commissioner Lance Meyer. It does seem like we're getting very, very, very detailed.
Is that a motion then?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So at this point, what I heard you say at the beginning was that you had, that you would be looking for a motion if you wanted to go to public hearing?
No, I was looking for, right, the question is, are we, is there a motion either? I mean, a motion to accept the recommendation from the planning commission if you want something different, because that's what had been brought to us. So that seems like the, the appropriate motion unless you want to go to a public hearing.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
So looking for a motion to approve the recommendation of the planning.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Lance Meyer. Is there a second? Commissioner Persky, do you want to? You want a second?
I'll, I'll go ahead and, and make that second. And just, just also say, you know, we did give the community the opportunity to have a speak, their opinions the, the first time and to have a, a public hearing for these few items, I think, is very much unnecessary.
Yep.
Okay, there's a motion and a second?
Maybe I came up with a term, land use abuse.
Yeah, I think you did. We've got a few woke, you've got wokeness, the wokeness lens. We have the land use.
I slept through the first part of the meeting and now I'm back.
I'm going to start running total of, of terms to use. I think we're ready to take the roll.
Okay, district three. District. District four. Hi. District five. Hi. District one.
Hi.
District two. Hi. Motion passes 4-1.
Okay, thank you. Item two.
The next item that we have is related to the other consent agenda item that was previously pulled. And Angie Berg can go through, based on the actions that were taken earlier, what can happen at this point. So Angie?
Thank you. Ms. Berg?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you, Shelley. So based on the county board's decision earlier in the meeting related to the 1 megawatt solar projects, no action would be required on this item today. And we will be working with the applicant to withdraw their conditional use permit request and then we will process it administratively.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was quick then. Item three.
Madam Chair, that, that is a plat? And I will have Angie review that plat with you as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Berg.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, which you don't see very often anymore, most of our plats are administrative, is to consider a Socks Center Township plat entitled Sherman Farms. It's a two-lot plat submitted by Ben Klink. And the property is located in Socks Center Township along County Route 17. The township did approve the preliminary and the final plat, as did the planning commission after their public hearing on November 19th. The recommendation would be to approve the plat of Sherman Farms.
Any questions?
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Notch, a second by Commissioner Persky. So no further discussion. I think we're ready for the roll.
District four. Hi. District five. Hi. District one.
Hi.
District two. Hi. District three.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, members. Thank you. All right, item number four.
Madam Chair, what we have in front of you, or what Angie's putting on the screen for you, is what we are proposing as our schedule for public hearings. So that you don't have to set public hearings for all of the next ordinance amendments. And I think she'll get it hopefully turned. There it is. And so what we would be looking for is a motion to approve the public hearing schedule so that you don't have to set all these as agenda items. Angie can go through her questions.
Thank you, Ms. Berg.
Madam Chair, basically as Shelley indicated, this is a request to actually finish all of our Shape Stearns ordinance amendments. And so we're looking at proposing the review schedule in front of you. Your next public hearing would be on April 20th and after that would be May 18th, June 22nd, and July 13th. So that's the proposed schedule in front of you today.
And to clarify for the public, the item that we have continued today, would we do that at our next meeting or will we be waiting to do that at May 18th?
Madam Chair, Shelley and I were chatting about that during the meeting and I think what we'll do is we'll bring that back to the board when we're ready. Now, since we do want to meet with the manufactured home park representation and others in property services, as indicated by Randy Strifel. So I would say that that one, we will, we're going to time it based on some of these other hearings that we have coming up. And hopefully included on May 18th, but if not, it will be caught on one of those, one of the other public hearings. And I will be sure to notify the appropriate parties of when that hearing will be continuing to tell.
Okay, if that is satisfactory to members, is there a motion to improve this schedule of public hearings?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Lance Meyer. Is there a second?
I'll second with a question.
Okay, there's Commissioner Mergen's seconds and a question.
I can't find this page in my packet. My packet number 292 is different. What am I doing wrong, Angie?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mergen, you're not doing anything wrong. I actually pasted this on my packet for today's presentation. I, I can, I, I believe I emailed this, but I'm not positive that I did. So I will, I'll email that to the commissioners after the meeting so you have this in writing.
All right, thank you.
And will these be posted on our website as well?
Madam Chair, yes, it, it will be posted along with the county ordinance online, so people are aware that there's changes. And then as we schedule public hearings, it's always on the public notices section on. And then as we schedule public hearings, it's always on the public notices section on the county's homepage.
Great. Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. I think we're ready to take the roll.
District Five. Aye. District One.
Aye.
District Two. Aye. District Three. Aye. District Four. Aye. Motion passes.
Right, thank you. Next item. Fee Lot Report.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we do have another item, which is packet page 293, and Becky Schlurf will be here to go through that item with us. Hopefully she's going to be popping on for that item. Becky, are you?
Madam Chair, good morning. I'm sorry, good afternoon, I guess now.
Yeah, it is afternoon.
Let me, I think I have control, but I'm trying to share just a second here. Okay. I believe you should be seeing the agenda item here for the Fee Lot Annual Report for 2020. And we have a two-year delegation agreement work plan with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Yet each calendar year, it does require that the county board approve that annual report. And so the annual review for 2020 was done in February of this year, and the county did pass with 100% compliance, meeting all of the requirements. The other part of this plan or this report is the performance credits. And so you can see in your packet on page 293, some of the figures over the past six years of the additional funding as a result of the credits. And again, that's decided once all of the counties submit their approved reports to see how the money will be divided up. So I'm not going to go through the details here, but if you have any questions before your approval, I'm willing to answer those.
Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we need to be accepting this, so we need a motion.
I'd like to accept the report. All righty.
Thank you. Commissioner Mergan, second.
Second, Commissioner Notch.
Great, thank you. So no further questions or discussion. We're ready to take the roll.
District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five. Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, next item. The different one watershed, one plan. So he's talking about the Sock. We're ready for a different one.
Okay, Madam Chair, this is regarding the one watershed, one plan for the Sock River Watershed. And this has been an ongoing project in the planning phase. And so there was a public meeting held in the end of January for public comments. And this is on the Sock River Watershed Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan. There was a comment period and a hearing. The notice was published in the local newspapers, the county website, social media accounts. And so at this point, we are looking for the approval by a resolution for the county board to submit this to the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources for their review and then for final approval. And just to note that the implementation phase then would begin once everything is approved and that the committee, the policy committee, which Steve Notch is a member of, is working on forming a joint powers collaboration, which we've discussed at county board before, where Sterns County would be the fiscal agent, and then the Watershed District would be the coordinator. And this is a really similar arrangement to the North Fork Watershed, I'm sorry, North Fork or the Crow River One Watershed One Plan arrangement as well. So if you have any questions, Cole is also available. But really, with this item, we're just looking for adoption of the resolution to submit it to the Board of Water and Soil Resources.
I do have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Mergan.
When we went to the one watershed, one plan with the Crow River, the Crow River Joint Powers Board was disbanded. And the reasoning was to prevent the second layer of, additional layer of government here. And I realize that the Joint Powers Board's a little different than the whole watershed. But is there anything that's going to be pulled back, back to prevent that second layer of government coming in here? Additional layer of government.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mergan, with the North Fork Crow River, there is an existing watershed district, and there was that Crow organization. And then with the one watershed, one plan, there was a joint powers that was formed. So the Crow was dissolved with the Sock. There's the Sock River Watershed District. And then there with the one watershed, one plan will be the joint powers. There's no additional third entity as there was with the North Fork Crow. Does that answer your question?
So the concern that Commissioner Mergan is raising shouldn't occur because it's an appropriate, it's an important concern. Okay.
Correct. There's not that additional entity in the Sock Watershed area.
Okay. Commissioner Notch?
And that's, again, why we went with the collaborative, you know, to not create another layer in there. So all the entities are involved in it, but you can actually get out of it. I mean, there's no taxing authority.
Okay, so we're looking for a resolution, or excuse me, a motion to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, being I've been on this since 2018. It's kind of like Lee would always say, you know, this horse has been putting along for a long time, and I think it's running out of gas.
Yeah, and Commissioner Notch.
Just getting started.
I will say, I just really want to thank you for your significant involvement in this because it probably has gotten to be quite a bit more than you may have ever even originally thought. Is there a second?
It was just tough last year because it couldn't be in person.
Is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion. We're looking for a second, but I'm afraid when I asked for it, Commissioner Notch might not have been done with.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it with a comment.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know that it's an accurate comparison with the previously cited watershed. The big picture for the, for the local resistance on that is that every government entity that touched on that particular watershed, whether they'll admit it or not, had their eye on the financial reserve that watershed had. And without substantiation, assumed that that reserve would go to their particular government unit. Well, it didn't work out that way, but that was the assumption that was made. And the dissolution was such a unique critter that the county or anybody else couldn't really make a good explanation of what, of how that would subsequently play out. So, yeah, that's an interesting comparison, but it's not an exact fit. Sorry.
No, thank you. It's, I will say for me, it's always helpful. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Lance Meyer. We have a motion, a second. I see no one further. I'm looking. I think we're ready to take the roll. And Randy, I know you're going to have to leave in 15 minutes, so I will continue doing not as good a job as you, but if we, if we're not done by then. I think we're ready to take the roll on this one.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five. Aye. District One.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Right, thank you. Now we're ready to go to the St. Cloud watershed, one watershed, one project, one plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this item is the very beginning of another one watershed, one plan. In Sterns County, we have several watershed, major watersheds in the county. So lucky or unlucky, here is another one. This is for the Mississippi River, which would be divided between Sartell and St. Cloud. So there are two resolutions here to initiate this planning process. One is to first have a resolution supporting the split of the Mississippi Sartell and the Mississippi-St. Cloud Watersheds. And I'll show you a diagram of that here shortly. The second resolution then is to support the one watershed, one plan project and the corresponding grant application to the Board of Water and Soil Resources. Later on then, if that were approved, then the entities involved would be working on a planned development agreement with the partners, and that would be coming back to the board. So I will just show you, maybe I'll back up one here though first. So watershed 11 here, you can see there's a north and a south, and 10 is, 10 is the Sock. So for some reference here, so 11 is this Mississippi Sartell. And then just below that number 11, that's the Mississippi-St. Cloud. And I'll just show you a zoomed in picture here. So this split was what was recommended by the majority of the partners involved for ease of planning purposes.
It's good that parties came to an agreement and a desire to move forward. Do we have a motion to accept these resolutions?
Chair, you want to do them all at once?
I believe so. Yeah.
Okay.
They could do it if you'd like.
I'll move them all at once.
Okay, great. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Persky, second.
Okay, there's a second. Questions or comments? No, did you have something? Okay. Yes, no, you're good. You're very small. And I moved you off the big screen. Okay, so I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, District Three.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five.
Aye.
District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
Passes unanimously also.
Excellent. Thank you, members. Thank you, Becky and Cole, for the work on this, this continued work. And Steve, again, thank you for yours, your long-term service on this. Now we'll start on the next one.
Just today.
Exactly. Okay, Property Services. Jeff John Smith, yep.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members.
Good afternoon.
Your second-to-last item is a presentation by Jake Peaty, county assessor. He will be providing you with the 2021 property assessment update. And so without any further comment, I'll just turn it over to Jake, and he'll offer some information regarding the current year's assessment. Go ahead, Jake.
Good morning, or good afternoon, I guess it is, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I've got a PowerPoint I'm trying to share here. Let me see if I can get it to work. All right, does it look, can you guys see it on there?
Yeah.
Property Assessment Update 2021. All right, I've got Randy Lar with me. He's the Assistant County Assessor. We'll kind of take team this quick PowerPoint. I know you guys are busy here, and it's been quite a, quite a morning already. So we'll kind of fly through this quickly. So just to start, a brief overview. You know, we worked on our property assessment this year, our quintile inspections, market conditions, you know, sales activity and ratios as usual, valuation changes, market observations, and new construction. And all these slides are Sterns County data only and do not include the city of St. Cloud. So just to kind of be clear on that as we go through here. We started our work last April, and we continue through May. Our valuations were completed on February 26th, which is similar to last year. So our staff really got out there and got a lot of work done, and it worked really well. You know, we had the COVID issues and a lot of things going on there. But, you know, administration and you guys yourselves were able to help us out, step up. We got some new technology that really helped out. You know, it's still using aerial photos. It's nice that we're going to have new aerial photos coming out this year. That really helps us out a lot too. So, you know, kudos to you guys for being frontrunners on, on the technology side of this. It really helped us do our jobs a lot better. And, you know, I don't think we could have got it done as well without your help. So thank you again. Our notices of valuation and classification were in the mail on the 18th of March. So most everybody should have gotten those by now, and they were, again, combined in one envelope as we had done in the past. This is a big money saver to the county, so I was glad we were able to get that done. Thanks to Randy Schreifels and his office for working through that with us again. You know, it works really well to do it that way. It's, you know, we color code them each year, and everything seems to work out well. The public hasn't had any issues with them that we've heard, and it's gone really well for us. Jumping into the quintile inspections, as you can see, we've, we've been in that 99 percentile the last three years. And, you know, we hope to continue to stay there. This past year with, you know, not getting out in the field quite as early as we could have due to some of the obvious COVID issues. You know, our number might dip just a little bit this year, but I think, I don't think it's going to dip much if it does at all. But just to, just to be aware that, you know, we weren't able to get out quite as early as we normally do. But our staff really ramped it up towards the end of the year once we were able to get out. And, you know, things worked out pretty well for us there. So looking at market condition trends, and this is just the time adjustments that we look at each year. You know, the offwater, offwater and onwater in the western, eastern, and Sartell and Eden Valley, they all have their own time adjustments. So you can kind of see, everything stayed fairly, fairly flat compared to the previous year, pretty similar, except for the onwater in western Sterns. And the offwater in Sartell were a little bit higher than we had experienced the previous year. And Eden Valley dropped to a lot closer to where we would like to see it, you know, in that five to 6% range. So everything, everything is looking pretty well. No big surprises out there. So nothing to be real concerned about on your end. Looking at sales that we processed this past year, and these are the electronic certificates of real estate value, were real similar to last year. 2019, we processed about 2346. This past year, we processed 2329. So just a slight decrease there. As in, as in every year, we verify all commercial, industrial, apartment, and agricultural sales, plus any residential sales that appear out of the norm. So we were able to get through that pretty easily. You know, we were down in appraiser for a little while this year, and we're actually in the process of backfilling that right now. But the rest of our staff was able to really chip in and help out, and, you know, minimal overtime was needed for that. So kudos to those guys out there. Looking at qualified sales activity and ratios. Apartments, we had five sales. This is down from nine the previous year. Our ratio came in really nice at 94%, which is, you know, we like to be around that 95%, which is, is pretty, pretty good for us. Commercial sales were up. We had eight more commercial sales than the previous year, again, in that 94, 95%, which was nice. Industrial sales, we usually don't give very many industrial sales, so those, those ratios fluctuate, as you can see over the, over the few year span here. You know, we're, we're kind of up and down with those. So it's, we can't put a lot of weight on those four sales, but we definitely do look into it. And the Department of Revenue recently added mini storage to the industrial side. It used to be commercial. So mini storage is a real hot, hot commodity right now, and people are paying big dollars for them. So we believe that kind of pushed that ratio down a little bit, further than it would normally. So, and we're looking into that as well. Our residential and seasonal residential, our, our sales amount was up a little bit. Our ratio was right around 90% like it was last year. So we're going to see that. Our ratio was right around 90% like it was last year. So we're going to see that five to six percent increase across the board. It kind of breaks down into off and on water, you know, still right around 90%, which is, which is nice. We're, you know, with the market as hot as it is right now, we're, we're glad that we're able to hang in that 90%. Real vacant land, that's, that's kind of a, another hot commodity right now is I guess a good way to term it. There were seven sales versus one the previous year and that ratio is down a little bit. So definitely something we've adjusted this year. And I think Randy might talk a little bit about that in a little bit here, as well as agricultural. He'll, he'll talk about these as well. But you know, we're sitting in that low 90s, which is, which is not a bad place to be either. So more to come on that in a second here. Just looking at apartments, our value changes, we were only seeing about zero to 2%. Based on that ratio I just showed you, we really didn't need to go up as much. You know, there's only a few apartments increasing as much as 5%. Changes are consistent across most properties regardless of age. You know, occupancy levels are still good. Apartments are still, it's still a strong market across the state really. So. Commercial industrial, we saw some fluctuations in values out there, you know, anywhere from minus 10 to positive 10%, depending on the property type. You know, overall, we were with new construction about a 4% increase without new construction, closer to 1%. So really pretty flat on that whole sector. And you know, there's some minimal signs of growth, but we also had some dips in that hospitality, entertainment, smaller retail. So you're talking, you know, bars, restaurants, bowling alleys, movie theaters, that property type that was really hit hard, a little bit harder by COVID. So there was some adjustments that we made there. And like I said before, the industrial sector experienced some expansion as well as in manufacturing shops and warehousing. So.
Jake, on that, Madam Chair, Jake, on that commercial, you know, that is a concern, you know, with the COVID. You know, I see so many, I guess, more vacant or opened for lease. And I don't know, Lee, you might have something on that too, with the, the sales on that. But do we have any idea how much is actually vacated in the area? I mean, are they really hurting as far as commercial?
We have, we have not seen a lot of vacated, you know, like, like you guys showed earlier, Pearl Lake Lodge sold, new ownership. We, we've seen quite a bit of new ownership come on, online, but not a lot of vacation of, of property. So, and we've talked to, we have a commercial meeting every January with all the counties in our region. And you know, it's, it's a pretty good group of people with a lot of knowledge and experience. And they were kind of seeing the same thing. And actually, some counties had, had more restaurants come online than, than they did actually vacated. So you know, and the sales that we were seeing and are still seeing, are, are still showing that we're doing pretty well there. So I'm not sure it's quite as ominous as, as people might think. And a lot of government funding and help was out there for people. So.
That's great. And Lee, if you want to certainly speak at any time you can, otherwise I was hoping when I got through the slide presentation that you'd make comments again, kind of going back to what Joe was just saying. You've got, you've got a lot of experience here. Others may want to as well. I mean, Steve, you may be seeing things from your vantage point as well. Let's go ahead and keep going through the, the presentation though.
All right, thank you. We'll jump here to the seasonal rec and residential market. I mentioned before this, you know, the sales are pretty similar. We're up a little bit, 1299 versus 1225. You know, again, it fluctuates depending on where you are in the county. But changes from minus three to positive nine percent were most common. You know, with our ratio at 90%, the time adjustment showed we needed to go up above five or six percent across the board. So I think that's, I think that's what you're going to see most when, when you talk to your constituents out there. You know, they're going to probably see that, that 5% increase in values. If, if anything goes up beyond that, you know, if, if you're getting up in the 15 to 20% range for whatever reason, we, we will send out a letter to those, those folks, even prior to the value notices going out. So we, we like to stay on top of it and get ahead of things a little bit. So they can expect to see that. They can give us a call right away and let us know. So we can maybe explain things before it gets to the local or county board level. So that's what we like to do. You know, Jeff was a great proponent of that too, of, you know, getting out in front of this kind of stuff and really being proactive with the public. And you know, we're trying to take that on and do the same thing Randy and I are. So you know, and again, changes vary by location and property type. So you know, it's typical. Last year was basically the same thing. A lot of this, I told our staff the other day, the theme kind of of this, of this assessment is it's basically the same as last year. Increases were very similar across the board. So jumping into the bear land sales. Again, similar to last year, you know, we have a lot of non-farm interests now in, in our smaller acreage sales. You know, residential, seasonal, hunting, hobby farms, you know, that, that property type is, is pretty hot right now too. So something we're, we're definitely looking into. Obviously, you know, anything near a lake is, is very attractive. Outskirts of cities are attractive for, you know, for commuting and such. Anywhere infrastructure is present. So prices are definitely still increasing in this subtype. Next up is the agricultural market, and I think Randy wants to hop in on this one. Randy's, you know, one of our, kind of more of our experts on agricultural in the office. And you know, being a farmer himself, he's got a little extra insight on this kind of thing. So I'll turn it over to him.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, Board members. We continue to see farmland prices increase. The last few years, we've kept values relatively flat. This year, we needed to go up about 5% with our, especially tillable values is where we're seeing the big change. And again, likely sparked by the low interest rates. This year, there was additional government payments that were made to farmers. We had a good growing season this past year, and then obviously the commodity prices started trickling up towards the end of 2020. So all of that led to about a 5% change in tillable values this year. The past few years, it had been our non-productive land, you know, woods and timber, that kind of thing that we've seen change. But this year, it was actually our tillable that we saw more of a change in. And as you can see at the bottom of the, the slide there, it shows our tillable value average actually went from 40, almost 4,500 to about 4,700 an acre. So about a 5% change. And of course, that would have been followed through on the green acre side since green acres is, is mostly made up of, of a tillable value. So you can see there about a 5% change there as well. On the next slide then, you'll see that our total value for the county, pretty similar to last year. I think we're at 3.96. Last year, we were about 3.8 this year. So both about 4% over year over year. We continue to see a growth in the overall market value, pretty substantial, about 700 million the last two years. Again, similar to last year, 697 versus 690 million. The next slide, then you can see the actual total new construction remains relatively flat. 2018, we're a little bit higher, but 2019, 2020, we're both around that 156, 157 million in, in new construction. And that makes up about 22% of our growth that you saw there in the previous slide for this, for the county. We just threw in a couple different projects that took place this past year. This happens to be the, the new distribution warehouse in Coal Spring. You can just keep kind of flip through them faster, Jake, if you want. We'll kind of hurry through these. But this is the, the addition made to the service center. Obviously, you guys are familiar with that one. Blatter put up a four-story office addition on their facility in Avon. Thompson Church in Eden Valley added an addition onto their property as well. And this is a Linden Township new shop warehouse office area that they had put up. New Casey's that was put up in Melrose. This is the, the soccer watershed office and garage. And we did have a couple apartment buildings that were finalized this year. This happens to be a 90 unit building that was completed in Sartell. But the next slide going to be a 35 unit that was completed in the city of St. Joe. This happens to be just a number of farm buildings that were put up this year. This is a shop that was put up in Albany Township. Duplex in the city of Bruton. And finally, a house in St. Augusta. I think this was one of our higher valued homes in, in this assessment year. So. So the last slide just kind of summarizes where we're at with their new home starts. This actually had been trickling down the last two years. You can see in 2018, we had a total of new home starts of 302, dropped to 261, and then again, the 225 this year. We're not quite sure what's, what's driving that besides, you know, the, the obvious one is the increasing lumber costs that we've seen lately. From what we've read in articles, that seems to be stalling things out a little bit on the new construction side. I don't know, Jake, did you have any more input on what might be factoring that?
Yeah, I think that's the main thing, you know, and with fuel prices that are starting to climb again, it may, it may continue to affect that. You know, really, there's, there's land out there. Land prices aren't outrageous. But you know, the cost, cost to construct a house right now is just a lot. And there's, you know, there's a lack of housing stock for sale too. So I really don't see why it would be a lack of, you know, new built houses, but that has to be the reason. You know, and financing is, is good right now, you know, and, and interest rates and everything else. So that, that really is, is the one thing that we can pinpoint right now. So. As far as sales, there was an article in the Star Tribune recently about the Saint Cloud metro area. And 11% was the increase they saw from February of 2020 until February of 21, overall increase. And it, it touched on a couple of different things with the lack of, of housing out there. And people are scared to put their house up for sale because they're worried that they will not find another house to move into. So that's part of the reason why some of that is happening right now as well. So a lot of different, a lot of different things going on with the market right now. So we're, we're just trying to stay on top of it and do the best we can with that side of things. So. Yeah. So last slide, any questions that anybody has, we'd be, we'd be happy to answer.
Or comments, Commissioner Meyer. I think you, you have thoughts or reflections on that? Commissioner Notch, Jeff, Joe?
I'll just make a comment, but we'll, we'll deal with it later. But man, I got my 2022 valuation proposed. Wow. I don't know where, we're going to have to talk about where that number came from.
Yeah, give us a call. We'll, we'll put you in touch with, with the appraiser or you can talk to us directly either way.
I sent you an email.
Okay.
I'm guessing you may, based on what you just shared with us, you may be getting other calls from other people as well.
You know, we, the phone calls started on, on Monday mainly, and it really has been pretty light, the calls have. I think just with the, you know, people are in touch right now with, with the internet and with what's going on with the market. So I think they understand that. There's not much out there and it's driving prices way up right now. So.
Thank you. I don't see any requested action on here. Is, I mean, this is really important and timely information. Okay. Members, any other comments or questions? Lee, I think you're saying, but you're muted. You're still muted.
There we go. Fingers went crazy. Yeah, the, they hit on all the high points I was going to talk about. Materials costs are remark, are up significantly. What we're seeing right now, at least in some of the apartments and commercial properties, since money is so cheap, you're seeing a lot of those older apartments especially doing updates. New, you know, right now is a great time to be in a new window business. Because that's, on an older unit, new windows are a real energy saver. And relative to some of the food and beverage places, some of the failures you're seeing out there is a matter of timing. The best worst example I can give you is the 400 Club was purchased by an experienced restaurateur, the people that own territory. And because of the COVID things, that, that business is now closed. So sometimes it wasn't, you know, the lack of demand. But the reality is, is that place was really prevented from gaining its potential. And so that was a victim of the timing. And the, the big gripe out there among commercial property owners is that the commercial properties owners were not treated equally. The burden for the closing and the spacing and all of that didn't happen to the Walmarts and the Targets and so forth. It happened to the small businesses. So that, that's where the, the pinch has come from. A lot of these businesses, our, our commercial properties that are available right now, timing was a big deal. If you made a deal within, say, oh, maybe even three years ago, but certainly two years ago, you weren't able to get a running start on the new ownership. And then your business went away because of the COVID. So materials have just increased significantly, but you guys nailed it. So good job, Jake, good job. Of course, you know, you learn from the best, Jeff. So good job.
Yeah, it's great presentation. Will you be emailing this to board members just so we have it for?
I sure can if you want me to.
I personally would like it.
Yep, yeah, we will.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Jeff Johnson. I also want to mention that, I also want to mention that the property assessment team has also provided information on the Stearns County website. It's actually referred to as the Annual Property Assessment Update. It's something that we started a few years ago. It's a great resource for our property taxpayers to get a feel for what's happening in their individual markets and geographic locations within the county. So I would encourage the viewers and your constituents, if they have questions, to refer to that resource that's online. It's been a great tool in helping us work at the assessment and paint the picture of what's happening in the local real estate market. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. And it is amazing. I haven't been on there for probably about a month, but I'll personally go look. But definitely want to encourage residents and businesses. It's, it's, it's amazing. So we appreciate all of your work.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move to issues by commissioners. And actually, Mike, before we get to all the board members, did you have anything?
No, Matt, I'm sure I don't. You, you answered the one question I was going to ask of the board.
Okay.
Earlier in the meeting.
Then District Four, Lee, we'll start with you.
Oh, I don't know how to promote this or pursue it. But something I would hope going forward, we had our lengthy environmental services agenda today. I would hope that somehow we could come up with, I call incentive-based land use. We want certain behaviors allegedly in our, in, in our land use in the county. Well, we can, it gets back to, are we going to, we, we always got the stick. You know, we are the regulators. We can make people do stuff. Is there a way to get the carrot more involved? Is there a way to create incentives in land use to get similar or types of activities? And I'm clueless how to do that. But I would hope that going forward, there'd be a way to do it. In addition, what this COVID thing has taught us, whatever we come up with, whether it's the update of our comp plan, whether it's the stuff we deal, we dealt with today. I think land use regulation flexibility is, is a big deal going forward. And we got to learn how to do that because that's, across the board, local units of government have depended on the stick. And I would hope that we can come up with something. That's it.
Thank you. I'm with you on that. It would be great. I haven't gotten any, heard any great buzz on it, but if we could, that would be fabulous. Steve?
Yeah, I just got, just a little quick, little PR thing. Out at Heptar Zoo over by Freeport, actually it's Stearns Electric helped them guys purchase an electric tram, which people will be able to ride around the zoo starting this year. So it'll be kind of an interesting addition because that zoo keeps getting bigger and bigger. So it'd be kind of an interesting addition because that zoo keeps getting bigger and bigger. So the, the walk can be a, a lot. So they actually purchased the all-electric tram to all people around the tour to zoo. So that's just a nice little feature for those guys.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. We, a field trip when we're able to take field trips.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's got to be a refreshing place to stop nearby too. So. Uh, Commissioner. Do you have anything?
Is that, are you up for me, Carol?
Yep, yep.
Um, say, I just, uh, I, I've got nothing other than a, a shout out. I appreciate, uh, all the work staff has been doing on getting the vaccines out. I know, uh, uh, Melissa and Erin and Janet have done a nice job with that, probably other people as well, but I just appreciate it. And then, you know, that's making the whole county, the whole state a lot safer. So thank you much.
Thank you. Mr. Mergan?
I have nothing.
Okay, great. Um, so I just had, uh, two quick things. One actually was about the vaccines and, you know, uh, I think some of us have kind of competitive nature. So um, it is good seeing, uh, how we're, we're working with communities and our health systems and others to really get this out and make sure we're getting, getting where it needs to go. And particularly people 65 plus, wow, are we rocking it. So as we are able to get more, it's going to be interesting to see. Glad to see that, uh, the state has at least gotten one location going now. And then, um, I, circling back to kind of the beginning of our meeting, um, it's really good to see some, um, momentum on broadband. I know a number of people have been working for a long time on this and um, appreciate our having really good and practical examples about what's working, what's not, and how we're not duplicating efforts. And, um, in a meeting on Friday, Senator Klobuchar, um, brought up that um, she's planning on leading, uh, the Senate efforts on this. So we've got a really great way to help, um, continue work with staff. And like I know people are working on trying to get, uh, continued, um, meetings. So um, we've got a great opportunity both on broadband and on infrastructure, hopefully bring, um, some of our hard earned taxpayer dollars home.
I'm sure.
Yes, Mike.
Take on to that just a little bit. A- actually, one thing that I was going to say was I, I think our two meetings with our members of Congress in this format went really well. Um, you know, gave all of us a chance to interact and um, you know, I don't know that it replaces a personal visit with them, but it sure is a good add-on. And I think it's something we'll want to continue to try to do. On the broadband, um, with the new federal money coming, I actually was in communication with AMC and uh, Micah, and they because I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to have many counties that are going to want to use this money on broadband, and maybe there should be a concerted effort, or at least a more efficient method. Maybe a way to interact with the money that the state puts out there. So um, anyway, I think they're, they have agreed with the, with the Office of Broadband that they're going to do some kind of a survey, at least to begin the conversation. Survey of counties saying, how, you know, you intend to use some of this money for broadband? If so, would you want to partner that kind of thing? So uh, we got a little movement in that direction too.
Well, thank, uh, thank you, um, for that. Cause, uh, you know, you, I know we've talked about this, that we need some, uh, whether we want to call it technical assistance or just good information, both about what's available, who else is doing it, the border to borders are worked somewhat okay. And then I know that, um, we're hearing not just in the state, but across the country. And we've got a lot of great providers. So this isn't just in providers, but understandably they want to, they want to put in where they want to put in. And we've got people who live in addition to where they want to put in. So if people are, if, uh, providers are getting resources, making sure there's language that also says, hey, you actually have to build it and you got to build it where it's needed. So um, this is a good time for all of us to weigh in, I think.
And their service areas, those provider service areas don't look at county lines either. So.
No. So, good thing we're, we're used to, to, uh, partnering with others, but, um, hopefully we could actually get this finished for, for, for people in our county. So, thank you. Well, with that, seeing nothing else, we are adjourned.
Nice to see you all.
Great to see everybody.
You guys did good.